Good morning, everybody. Please be seated. In the absence of our chaplain this morning, I will lead the prayers. For our country, for the Queen, and all who sit in authority under her. Bless, O Lord, we beseech thee, our Queen and Parliament, and all who bear any office in the state. Save us from the sins that most easily beset us. Bless every effort for the well-being of our people, and make us a nation fearing thee, and do righteousness to the glory of thy holy name through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. For the County of Stafford and for the work of the County Council. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee to bless us with honourable industry, sound learning, and unwavering faith. Defend our liberties, preserve our unity, and do with wisdom and grace all those to whom is entrusted the authority of government, and never lead us in the paths of righteousness and peace to the honour and glory of thy name through Jesus Christ our Lord. We commend to thy merciful care, O Lord, all members and employees of this council who are passing through suffering and distress, beseeching thee to grant them, according to their need, peace of heart, strength of body, and health mind for the sake of Jesus Christ our Saviour. Go before us, O Lord, in all that we do with thy most gracious favour, and further us with thy continued help, that in all our works, begun, continued, and ends in thee, we may glorify thy holy name, and finally, by thy mercy, obtain everlasting life through Jesus Christ our Lord. We'll now conclude with the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory for ever and ever. Amen. Thank you. The meeting today... Today's council meeting will adjourn at 10:50, when we will then hold a special meeting for the Alderman presentations. As of the last meeting, we will remain seated when speaking as a means of restricting any viral spread. It worked very well last time, so we'll continue this time. Are there any apologies?
Chairman, I have had apologies from Jack Abrahams, Philippa Hayden, Phil Hewitt, Sid Hesane, Julia Jessel, Kath Perry, Bob Spencer, Mike Wilcox, and Ian Wilkes.
Are there any other apologies anybody knows about? Does any member wish to declare an interest? councillor Wellington.
Interest in item number fifteen, please.
councillor Wiseman.
Thank you very much, Chair. I have a personal interest in item number five, programme thirteen. I'm a target for the Martin Billings, and that organisation has a contract with SCC. That has a contract with SCC family, aren't you sure?
Thank you. councillor Heath? Your microphone was on. I move that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 22nd of July 2021 be signed as a true record. Is that agreed? Honorary Alderman Brian Edwards, MBE. It is my sad duty to inform the council of the death on the 13th of August 2021 of Honorary Alderman Brian Edwards, MBE. Mr Edwards represented the Kinver South Staffordshire County Electoral Division on the county council between 1989 and 2017. He served on a number of the council's committees, including the Audit and Standards Committee, Planning Committee, Policy and Resources Committee, Waste Disposal Committee, Corporate Review Committee, Prosper Staffordshire Select Committee, of which he served as chairman, and the Charities and Trusts Committee. Mr Edwards was awarded the MBE in 2015 for services to the community. He was also appointed as an honorary Alderman in 2017 in recognition of the contribution he had made to the works of the council. Would anybody like to speak? councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman. Brian Edwards was my predecessor, he was my mentor, and eventually my friend. He helped me with my first election to replace him as the Member for Kinver Division in South Staffs. After that, Brian was always on the end of the phone if I needed him, although he was the leader of the district council. Any advice, he was always available, and I believe this was also the case for all of his 48 district council members too. Brian was a special person, he really lived his 81 years to the fullest. He loved sports such as skiing and squash, so much so that he even opened a squash club in Kinver. He loved people, I never heard him lose his temper. He had a capacity to care for everyone, whether they were like-minded or not. He was a true gentleman. Brian always had a twinkle in his eye, he loved to laugh, and he always saw the funny side of life. But still waters do run deep, he was also very quietly intelligent and fiercely innovative. He led various projects within the district council, including the I54 South Staffs Business Enterprise Park project extremely successfully. Brian, as the chairman has alluded to, was awarded an MBE for his contribution to communities and local government, and deservedly so. He was a wonderful public servant and leader. He's sorely missed by all in his community, and Staffordshire is the poorer for his loss. Thank you.
councillor Philip Atkins.
What can you say about Brian? He was quiet, effective, loyal, worked for the people that he represented in Kinver, and particularly South Staffordshire. He was elected when there weren't so many Conservatives in the chamber, and I dare say there's not many who can remember those days. This was the boundary between Labour and Conservatives. And Brian knew that there were things that had to be done. And if there's one thing that he mentioned to me when he took control 12 years ago, was that the amount of investment that had gone into South Staffordshire in such a short time. Because of the nature of politics and the panhandle, South Staffordshire was always a bastion of Conservative councillors. I think we always had six, at least, in South Staffordshire out of the eight. But he knew that things... He was quite ineffective. He knew things that needed to be done, and do the right thing for not just South Staffordshire in Kinver, but for the region and the nation. And I noticed even recently, he was out on I54 with the next extension. And if ever there's a memorial to Brian Edwards, it's the fact that all those jobs on the I54 South Staffordshire. Because although Wolverhampton and Staffordshire County Council put the money into it, it was South Staffordshire District Council who agreed to give up the rates, business rates, to pay for the improvements to the motorway junction, the only motorway junction that's been built by local government. And it was Brian who really championed that, along with the waste and resource plant at Four Ashes, and also the work that's going to be happening at Featherstone. But he was also a keen defender of the Green Belt. And I can remember, once I went on a tour of the county, and I went to South Staffordshire, and he apologised that he hadn't managed to show me the whole of South Staffordshire. Well, for those of you who don't know, I had to drive through the whole of South Staffordshire to get to Kinver, and an envelope and everything else. So I knew full well what was going on. Staffordshire will be a poorer place for Brian's passing, not only because of the man himself, but what he did for the whole county at a regional and national level, as well as local. My thoughts, and all our thoughts must be with his family. His sister-in-law and brother-in-law live near Utoxida, so he had reason to come up to my neck of the woods as well. But it will be a sadder place. But there was one thing he was really upset about, and that was one of the elections that he was involved with had to be held again as a by-election, because the Liberal candidate passed away. And Patrick Cormac had to stand again as well for a by-election in South Staffordshire. There were one or two thought they might win the seats, but hey-ho, hell hadn't frozen over. But Brian will be in heaven, he'll be looking down on us and wishing us well for the future. And, as I said, thoughts with his family and everybody who's close to him. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Mark Wellington.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick one from me, and it sort of echoes what's been said already. Brian was an excellent leader, he never made a fuss, he never got excited, he never wanted to prove a point, but he did want things to get done. I had particular dealings with Brian because of the I54. It was Brian Edwards, myself, and Roger Lawrence from Wolverhampton Council. And that was a fantastic indictment for the councils to have a Labour council, unitary, a Conservative county council, and a district Conservative council, all working together, all working well, never a cross word between the three of us. And in fact, I think we actually won an LGA award for the work that was done. This was all under the auspices of Philip as the leader. And Brian, whether it was the interchange for the South Staffordshire members who thought I was sort of working on my own, Brian did come and see me several times, and we worked out a plan that was best for the people of South Staffordshire, because we knew it was probably going to happen. He was just a star, and I miss him, he was just a lovely man. Thank you.
councillor David Williams.
For me, when I first came on to South Staffs Council, which was some time ago, and Brian was the welcoming face, he was the consummate professional councillor, who did nothing but make sure that South Staffs Council gave the best possible services to its communities. He worked through his illness, all the way through to the end, with still working hard, even from his hospital bed. He was an absolute Conservative through and through, who believed in the values that we do on his side, and I think he portrayed them in the best possible ways forward, and not making a big speech, but it was an absolute honour and privilege to know and work with the man. And I'm very thankful to have known him.
Thank you to all those who have spoken. Can we now stand for a minute of silent remembrance? Thank you. Honorary Alderman Terry Alec Dix. I'm sure that members will join me in congratulating Honorary Alderman Terry Dix of Tamworth on his recent award of the Cross of the Order of Merit of the Federal Republic of Germany, the German equivalent to the OBE. The award was presented at the German Embassy in London by Ambassador Andreas Michalas, and is in recognition of Terry's work to help establish the town twinning between Bad Lassef and Tamworth. And his selfish interest, his selfless interest in the name of peace and understanding in the Cannick Chase German Military Cemetery and its memorial. The ambassador said, "Town twinning creates vibrant links between our societies. Now especially, they are more important than ever. Each one of the more than 480 twinnings between Germany and British communities builds bridges between our countries and brings people closer together. Your outstanding commitment to supporting the twinning between Bad Lassef and Tamworth over decades, and indeed to this day, is impressive and example to all." So, well done and congratulations, Terry Dix. Mr Oaks.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. If I could just add my congratulations to those you've just put forward, and just say a few words about Honorary Alderman Terry Dix, or as I call him, Uncle Terry. It's one of many. I've just been insulted. It's great opportunities like this when people's achievements are celebrated, because it gives us an opportunity to thank them. And in the sad news of, we've just heard about Brian Edwards' passing, we never got a chance to celebrate some of his achievements. So just take this opportunity to thank Terry Dix for what he's done, not just for Staffordshire and for Tamworth, and we all know he's led this authority, he's been chairman of this authority, and he's also put some cracking roads through the middle of Tamworth and adjacent to it. So there's lots of stuff that can be celebrated, but this is about the stuff he's done outside that political world, outside that world he was elected for. And it's interesting to note that the award for the Order of Merit is for political, economic, social, or intellectual realm, and it's about rebuilding the fatherland. So I think, no, I think what he's done there is shown us that actually a personal interest in getting stuck in a particular project is worthy of doing. The links he's built with Bad Lassefer are seen now, and he did this in the early 80s. We've actually got members of the public from Bad Lassefer visiting Tamworth this week, and they've come to Tamworth not just because of the twinning, but because of the relationships that have been built up through that twinning organisation, through the efforts and the relationships over the years. And to step out and support the graves in Cannick Chase, the German war graves, and get involved in that is a fantastic tribute, and it brings something back to the community. This isn't about what's been achieved in this chamber or in this political world. This is about what he's done, because he has an interest and a passion for it. And I think the world is a better place because of that contribution. So I'd just like to share your thanks, Mr Chairman, to Terry Dix and for the work he's done for the fatherland.
councillor Mrs Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to add my words of congratulations to Terry Dix. I didn't know about this at all until the leader informed me, because very often you don't hear about things that people do outside their council work, even though it's been incredibly successful. And so I'm so pleased that he's been rewarded in this way, and his work has been recognised. I think anyone who's been involved in twinning knows how difficult it is, not just to sustain it over, well, to sustain it over decades, even a few years. It can be very difficult to ensure that that is a successful partnership. It requires commitment, perseverance, and sheer hard work. So I don't in any way underestimate the amount of work that Terry Dix must have been put in to achieve this wonderful result. And in fact, I'm so delighted that he's been recognised by Germany, because clearly many twinning committees up and down the country, you know, are desperately trying to ensure that those partnerships, which are so important to the peace of the world, continue and thrive. So for Terry to have done it so successfully for so long just demonstrates, I think, the character of the man and his commitment. So I'm incredibly pleased that he's achieved this, and delighted to congratulate him too.
councillor Mrs Tina Clements.
Thank you, Chair. As the current chair of Tamworth Twinning, I just want to say that Terry was instrumental in setting up the Twinning Association, especially for our twin town of Bad Lassefer in Germany. That's the correct pronunciation, Chair. And that was way back in 1980, 41 years ago. Last year, we should have celebrated our 40th anniversary, but obviously Covid got in the way, and we weren't allowed to travel to Germany, and they weren't allowed to travel to here. As councillor Oates has said, we've got two members of the German Twinning Association in Tamworth currently, and as he said, that's because they have friends here over the years, and they come because they want to. I first became involved in 2012, and Terry has always been the go-to person for dates, information, and people, because if it's not stored in his head, it was stored in his garage. And I think his wife, Pat, was very pleased to see the back of all those boxes when we moved them out to a storage unit. My counterpart, Harold Hagadorn, in Bad Lassefer contacted me over a year ago about this, and I had to have secret liaisons with his son, only to find out information, I'd like to point out, with his son Eddie to find out dates of birth and his wedding day and when he moved into Tamworth, and all those kinds of, that information that the ambassador would need. So I'm really proud to know Terry and his family. I'm really proud of the work that he's done for our Twinning Association. And I know that the children from Willocke High School that have got the exchange programme going, and have been for 40 years, my daughter was one of them, and I know that she's got a lot of respect for Terry for the work that he's done and the help that he gave her. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Retirement of Andrew A Haig, a Magister Senior Coroner for Staffordshire South. I've been informed of a proposed retirement on the 31st of October this year of Andrew A Haig, a Magister Senior Coroner for Staffordshire South. On behalf of the council, I extend the council's thanks to Mr Haig for his services to the county, and wish him well in his retirement. And finally, councillor Ross Ward is getting married on the 24th of October. His bride-to-be is Mary Ann Argument. I think it's all in the name there. But from the council, congratulations, Ross and Mary. Statement of the leader of the council. Councillor White, will you move consideration to the statement, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I move the statement of the leader of the council.
Intensive support for Staffordshire and children with disabilities. Mrs Charlotte Atkins.
I would just like to ask how these proposals will impact on the provision of youth clubs for children with special needs. You will appreciate that many have closed, but they are even more vital for these children, because they get fewer chances to socialise with their peers. So what impact will these proposals have on that? I hope that there won't be a negative or adverse impact, because I think that these youth clubs are really vital, particularly for children with special needs. Thank you.
councillor Sutton.
So, thank you, thank you for that, and, Charlotte Atkins, thank you for your question. I must apologise because of coughing in the chamber. I didn't quite hear the bit about which children that you were referring to. But I'm very happy to deal with your issues outside here and give you a written answer when we can clarify exactly the details of the contract. The intensive support for children with disabilities, at this moment in time, there are, it falls into two sort of categories. That children's community support that we provide, and also a range of commission community short breaks, opportunities. And this paper was about bringing those two things together under one commissioning proposal. But quite happy outside the chamber to take forward and answer your questions directly.
Future delivery of replacement care services for children with learning disabilities. Child exploitation and missing children and young people services. councillor Mark Sutton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just briefly, just to explain that protecting children from exploitation is and always will be a real priority for this authority. As the forms of exploitation evolve, so our response need and our preventative work also needs to change. Traditionally, we've been more involved with child sexual exploitation. But the change of this contract sees us working across all forms of exploitation: child sexual exploitation, child criminal exploitation, gangs, county lines, knife crime, youth violence, modern slavery, child trafficking, and radicalisation. This contract is a joint one with ourselves, obviously, City of Stoke-on-Trent City Council, and the Staffordshire Police, Fire, and Crime Commissioner. And it will seek to contribute to our whole system approach to the delivery of those priorities that are set out in the strategy that is overseen by the Children's Safeguarding Board.
Public health commissioning plans. councillor Mark De Ville.
It's me, Chairman. Thank you. There are some good news stories here. If one was ever wanted to start a public-facing service, you wouldn't want to start in March 2020. And that's what humankind did, that's when they kicked off. They were responsible in part for the drug and alcohol service. They were responsible in part for the drug and alcohol service. And I'm very glad to be able to tell you that during the pandemic, they increased the alcohol provision by approximately 10%. Not just to look after problem drinkers, but to help those who are described as hazardous drinkers who may in short order become a problem in response to the Covid pandemic because people were drinking more at home. And I just want to thank them for their efforts, for doing that for us. Thank you.
councillor Mrs Atkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm very pleased to hear that news about humankind. But my concern is that despite repeated promises to strengthen public health and prevention, government funding for local authority public health budgets has been substantially cut in recent years. Clearly, that was paused during 2020, but it's still 24% below the level of 2015-16. Now, I think we all recognise the vital role that public health played during the Covid pandemic and the vital role they play in terms of smoking cessation, sexual health clinics, health visiting, alcohol dependency and so on. So what is the council doing to lobby the government over restoring that public health grant? Because I do think we all recognise the importance of public health and perhaps many people didn't recognise that before the pandemic, but now recognise the important role they play in terms of prevention. Now, we all know that prevention is better than cure. So that if we can bolster up those teams back to the level that they used to be at, which again was not highly funded initially. So what is the council doing to try to persuade the government on the basis of what, how public health teams have proved themselves over the last 18 months, that they should invest in this vital work of the local authority?
councillor De Ville, did you want to speak on this matter? No, sorry, your life flashed up a little. Okay, leader.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Directly to councillor Atkins' point about lobbying for funding. I was able to sit down with the Chancellor of the Exchequer about two weeks ago and ensure that our view about three-year settlements and making sure that social services and other responsibilities are adequately funded. So the point has been made directly to his face by myself. So hopefully, he will pay attention. We'll find out, sure enough, on the 27th of October. Concerning public health, I think the mood music with our NHS colleagues has changed somewhat. And what you'll have noticed over the recent evolution of the integrated care partnerships or integrated care boards, whatever you want to call them, is there's much more a focus on population health. To me, what that realises is that it's not just about curing sickness and curing illness. It's about preventing that and the entire system being part of that solution. The idea that Staffordshire County Council or our district and borough colleagues are simply the answer to the public health challenge is wrong. It's a system approach that is required and the emphasis on population health is something that we are pushing forward with our NHS colleagues across Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Recommission of Staffordshire Integrated Advocacy Service. councillor Paul Northcote.
Thank you very much and good morning, Mr Chairman. Yes, I'm pleased to see the Cabinet's commitment on this. This is a very important and sometimes not fully appreciated part of our society to provide the advocacy for those that are unable to have usual access to these things and to make sure that their care, particularly in the secure estate for prisoners and for those that are detained for one reason or another, whether it's a mental health act or whether it's at a Majesty's pleasure, that there's this type of service in place to make sure that their interests are represented and protected. I think that the prudent looking at four years is probably a good thing because when people are aware of services in place, it gets time to get that message out there where they are and in terms of the profile that the service offers. So in terms of safeguarding this, I think it's an excellent way forward. And I'm glad to see that the Cabinet have actually proactively looked to approve the commandments of the attending process for the next phase. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
councillor Mark Sutton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. Just to add a little bit, I think, from colleagues' comments, just, you know, advocacy is that provision of help and representation by an advocate for people who probably would not be able to do it on their own behalf. And we do have a legal requirement to do that in certain circumstances. And a little bit like the previous two items I've spoken about, this is about the recommissioning and the contract going out. One particular point I would like to add in there and that includes within the advocacy service children who have attained the age of 14 so that their transition into adulthood can be covered by this contract as well.
UK Community Renewal Fund Priority Projects. councillor Derek Cookfield.
Can I just say, Mr Chairman? Thank you very much, Mr De Ville, for allowing me to speak. Sometimes I get a little bit carried away, right? Because when I represent my residents, you know, they deserve for me to be carried away and get the point over. We weren't on that, John. Can I just say, Mr Chairman, I welcome this. I mean, when you come to look at the areas, the I cover it, right? The little villages, right? And the most deprived in the whole of the county. And when you come to look at it, right, it's devastation. I mean, we had one village, and I'll call it by its name, and that's Nutton. And Nutton, when I come to look at Nutton, had everything. And then all of a sudden, they've had nothing because it was all taken away. And the Labour Party, and I'm going to have to say that the Labour Party policy at the time, right, is to keep them down there, right? Don't give them anything, only a few scraps now and again, and they'll keep voting Labour. But I'm sorry, they finally got the message, the people in that area, right? And the last time for the county council, the majority of people voted Conservative. And I was really surprised with that, right? Because basically, most of Nutton is ex-council houses. And can I just say, Mr Chairman, I up the cabinet, look very carefully at the villages within the borough of Newcastle because the villages need help, right? And when you come to look at it, and I've looked at it very carefully, right? Down south, they seem to have everything spent, and we referred to Taddy Dex, everything being spent down south. But when you come to every area, right, up in the north, as we call it, right? They didn't want to know us. So can I just say to the Cabinet, thank you very much and I hope that you'll spend quite a bit of that money within my area, right, on education, on jobs, right? And I'll even go as far as technology, right? Because a lot of people within my area, I'm going to include myself, 66% right, can't even use a computer, right? And they want to be bought into this type of thing, right? So they can be educated, so they can go out and get a decent job. Because I think that's how the world is going at this moment in time. And the leader of the council is looking across at me and he's laughing. Okay, Mr Chairman, thank you very much. I kept control.
Thank you. councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chair. So this investment in Staffordshire is very good news. I just thought I'd add a couple of points of detail. So Newcastle District has been identified as the priority area for this particular scheme. There are numerous other priority areas across the country. But in terms of Staffordshire, Newcastle is the only one. That means that projects that apply to benefit from the funding that's available through this scheme are encouraged to have a Newcastle element to them. We yet to find out which schemes are successful, but I can tell you that 87% of the applications that we had in Staffordshire did include schemes in Newcastle. So I think there is a very good chance that there will be funding coming towards the district and I hope into the areas that have just been described. But we will to find out when government makes its announcement, which I hope will be later on this month. And this is part of a broader investment that we're seeing from government into Staffordshire, which has benefited Newcastle. It's also benefited Stafford, Tamworth, Burton. And it's good that we're benefiting so much from government's attention to our area across the board.
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. For members, we've just picked up, there's a little bit of feedback which we're just hoping to sort out. To councillor Huckfield, the wry smile was around computer use, Derek, and hoping that at some point we can get you into the computer use space because that'd be a really good thing to be able to achieve. So, good on you. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Integrated Performance Report, Quarter One. Waste Management Retender for Disposal of Sweepings and Gully Waste. councillor Mark Willington.
Thank you, Chair. Looking at the report, it's the last paragraph I really wanted to comment on. And it's not often that overspends are good in any council. But for the county council to spend an extra £18 million on capital projects is a good news story. And I'd just like to ask the leader, what sort of projects are we sort of funding over and above what was planned? Because there's a lot of 106 monies and such like go forwards and it's really good that as a county we can provide more assets. Thank you.
councillor Ian Parry.
Thank you, Chair. And thank to our colleague councillor Willington for the question. I think this isn't necessarily about additionality. This is about performance of the capital programme. So in terms of hitting the budget was the key requirement here. And as you said, this is across a range of products, whether that be school development or infrastructure, roads, et cetera. It just says, I think, that the council is doing well at project management of major capital projects. I think this bodes well for the future in that we would hope and expect that the county council will be entrusted with additional capital to help our economy and to build our infrastructure, et cetera. So I think this demonstrates how well a council can do at its management of capital projects.
councillor John Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask the Cabinet member what infrastructure improvements are going to take place, especially in the next two to three years prior to an election. Because to be quite frank, I've only got to look at Bickenside, where we've had temporary traffic lights now for four blooming years. We've got two massive estates. The estates that are going up there are three times bigger than the Wildwood Estate, which is at Weeping Cross. Now, to come off those estates is one, a single-carriage road coming on to a single-carriage road with temporary traffic lights, which is an absolute disgrace. It's a nightmare at peak flow times. And I must admit that at Weeping Cross, we've just built a new estate on the old police HQ. And I'd like to know where the 106 money's gone because we needed to improve that road system there. It's an absolute nightmare. And I can go on and on and on about this. The infrastructure around this town is an absolute shambles. The only good thing that's come out of it in the last few years is a SWAR, which will be great. But I'd like to know why we're not pursuing these developers for more and more 106 money to help with the interruption in this town. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, we've moved on to funding of capital programmes and highways. And I would like to have pointed out that it's wonderful to see the 106 funding improving the expenditure of this council on major projects. But when you start looking at the limitations of 106 funding and you look at my division, we have major developments going on in Lichfield that have traffic pouring through the lanes in my division to go to Birmingham and cause horrendous problems, yet the 106 money doesn't touch any of that problem at all. And I don't know how the funding is going to come forward to improve the limitations of access through to the major roads from places like Lichfield, Burntwood and whatever. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning, everyone. I just want to reply to councillor Francis about Weeping Cross and Wildwood and the development on the police headquarters, about 106 money. I can assure you, councillor Francis, that is being looked at as we speak. Thank you.
councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Chairman. I understand people's concerns regarding 106 monies, infrastructure and so forth. Well, I remind members that 106 money is governed by planning regulations, which means that usually it has to be within or for serving that development that it's actually being paid for. So that's, it isn't monies that is just donated to other areas to be able to use for infrastructure. Members are aware of my email address and they're more than capable of going on and on and on, as councillor Francis likes to do, and asking me exactly what the monies are for. And I'm more than happily, outside of this meeting, make sure that they're made aware of where those monies are going. But I can assure you that my offices and all 106 monies are gathered in as we can and we are utilising them for the betterment of the area. But I will have to remind you yet again, it is a planning consideration from districts and boroughs. And usually that means that the 106 money, unless it is designated for anything specific, has to be used for the betterment of that development and not others.
leader.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Councillor Francis is a very vocal and steadfast advocate for problems within his division and this morning has highlighted that yet again. So thank you for raising those issues, John. We will be picking those up. They are an ongoing set of problems that we look to confront. As far as the major infrastructure projects are concerned, there are a lot of them going on around the county. I think it's next Friday, the SWAR is officially opened. And what a triumph that is. I think that councillor Williams has been sending, is it a week on Friday? Sorry, it's Lichfield Southern Bypass tomorrow gets opened and the SWAR gets opened a week on Friday, a week tomorrow, I think it is. What a triumph they are to the work of Staffordshire County Council and the work we've done together with developers to unlock infrastructure and unlock areas of development from across the county. I was up at Red Hill yesterday afternoon, visiting GE and their new academy for apprentices. What a fantastic facility that is. GE are opening it up, okay? But it's because we facilitated the unlocking of Red Hill that's enabled that to happen. So there is a lot going on that we can be very, very proud of. Yes, there's always going to be niggles, aren't there, John? There are always going to be niggles. We will do our best to get on top of those. About five foot seven, I'd say. But we continue. All right, five foot four, we continue to make progress.
Thank you, leader, but you did exaggerate. Framework Agreement for Provision of Asbestos Removal and Capuculation Services. councillor Jonathan Price.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to take the opportunity to hijack this particular item and talk about the extra £5.5 million we've had for capital school programme. And where that falls in quite nicely with this particular item, of course, is that we need to make sure we have need to make sure we have the right frameworks in place to make sure that where asbestos removal or works are required, that it's done within a reasonable cost and it's done to a professional quality. So making sure, as I've said, the right frameworks in place is absolutely key. But again, I'd just like to point out that we have had, on top of our initial £3.6 million of capital funding for school repairs, we have had this year an additional £5.5 million from government, which is an excellent news story. And I shall now hand over to councillor Deville.
Commissioner Colin Greatrix.
Thank you, Chairman. Never thought I'd be speaking on such a subject until about a couple of years ago, when professionally I discovered some in a building, and it would be something we'd been expecting or suspicious of. All I would say to those cabinet members involved with this framework, and I don't notice the last line refers to a possible extension, is to make the most of the first two years and be proactively looking for it, because it's a lot more difficult to deal with once you've found it, and you've got places that are having to be closed and sealed off, and very expensive short-term solutions. If you can find it first, and then track it down and deal with it at leisure, it's a lot less expensive and a lot less time consuming. So I would recommend that if this framework is agreed, then the first two years are going to be valuable, actually looking for problems so they can be resolved.
Commissioner Octaville.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm pleased that these items have been brought on to the leader's statement today, Chairman. Really, really important. There's this item, there's the item at number 12, the provision of ICT equipment, massively important, Chairman. And I think the members can understand fully the scrutiny and the challenge that we place on placing all framework agreements, Chairman. They're massively important. It's not my money, it's public money, it's the money of the people of Staffordshire. And please rest assured that we scrutinise and we challenge all frameworks, all contracts, in an extremely rigorous way. By bringing these items, and Chairman, I probably bring one of these items to every cabinet meeting, it also shows the transparency, the need for transparency. We are transparent about the way that we procure services and the way that we ensure that, bottom line is, that our customers get optimum service from this council. And equally important, our customers get very best value for money from their Staffordshire pound. And I think councillor Greatrix makes an excellent point about being proactive, and it's essential that we're proactive with this particular issue, councillor Greatrix, with the removal and dispersal of asbestos. But I think it's absolutely essential that we're proactive when we're looking at all future contracts, that we look at and scrutinise all contracts, so that we pick up any possible issues at the time of placing the contracts, and also that we make sure, absolutely make sure that we get best value for money, Chairman. Thank you.
I'm now going to take items 10, 17 and 18. That's the update from the Covid-19 member-led local outbreak control board, the Covid rates update, and the community testing vaccinations together. Commissioner Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. First of all, on the Covid vaccinations, is the leader aware that school pupils destined to have their Covid vaccination as 15-year-olds have now been told, because they've just passed their 16th birthday, that they're no longer eligible to receive their jabs at school? Given that the rise in Covid infections is particularly spiking among 11 to 17-year-olds, isn't this bureaucratic madness? And what will the county council do to ensure that those 16-year-olds are protected as soon as possible? And given that we're taking 18 at the same time, is the cabinet member, or indeed, I think she's not present, but the leader aware that despite the county council promoting the importance of getting the flu jab this year, that there are none to be had anywhere in Leake? Is this the same for other Staffordshire communities? And what can the county council do to ensure that the supply of flu vaccines to protect residents in what is expected to be a very bad flu year? Thank you.
Commissioner David Smith.
Chairman, I think when we look at the problems of Covid and the way that it's been tackled, not only by this local authority but also across the country, we faced with the outbreak of Covid-19, a problem that could only be compared perhaps with the Black Death and the plague. Perhaps if at the time of the plague they'd had this local authority in control, they might have come out with a better conclusion. Chairman, I'm absolutely delighted that I, yesterday, had my third vaccination. I think that the way that this council and the way that the government has handled things has been exemplary. I'm appalled at the people who choose to knock and try and pull down what's been done. Thousands of lives have been saved across the whole country and in this county, and I think that we should be taking the opportunity to say thank you and how proud we are of the work that's been done. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Johnny McMahon.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. We know that the numbers are climbing, we know that their numbers are higher here than they are in the rest of the West Midlands, and we know that this is driven by school-aged children, adolescents and young adults. But we are on to it, and we're doing our very best to meet that challenge through several means. Despite this, the hospital numbers are broadly stable, as are the ITU numbers, for which we're extremely grateful, and that is due to the technology of the vaccine, there's absolutely no doubt about that in my mind. We are responsible for testing and tracing, and we're, the numbers are a little less than they were before, but we are significantly better than the England average, and we've got to be grateful for our officers for that, particularly Richard Harling. What's going really well is our test and trace people knocking on doors and saying, we think you should have a test. And they're taking it, and it's been very well received. And that is being concentrated on the most vulnerable and the most deprived areas in our community, and I'm grateful for that. The flu vac, the vaccine programme is reaching the most challenging it has yet. There's the flu vaccine, there's the Covid vaccine for the young, as councillor Charlotte Atkins has made quite clear, there's the third primary dose for the clinically extremely vulnerable, and there's the booster vaccine for cohorts 1 to 9. I was heartened by what I heard from the NHS this week, that 42% of those in cohorts 1 to 9, that's over the age of 50 and have conditions that render them at risk, and social and healthcare workers, has reached 42% of those who are six months after the last jab. I think in the first two weeks, that's an exemplary performance, and I think we should be very grateful to them, and I'm proud of what the county council is doing in supporting that endeavour. Our Covid defences will remain in place until March of next year, that's test and trace, manage outbreaks, support the vulnerable, and support the NHS in its vaccine programme. We also have a comms programme, which is less prescriptive and more saying, the responsibility's yours, it's up to you. Up to you is the title of it. And we're going to concentrate particularly on the vaccinations of the young to really promote that, because that's where the challenge lies at the moment. In terms of councillor Atkins' question about those the age of 15 who've just turned 16, that's clearly an eccentric decision, and I will take that up with the NHS. In terms of the one-week delay for the practices in Leake, there has been a delay in other parts of the county, and I've been assured by the NHS, it is only a delay and it will be picked up. I myself had the flu vaccine first thing this morning from a local pharmacy, so there's more that one can go, there's more places to go to than simply your own practice. You can arrange to get it done at the pharmacy. In terms of the anti-vaxer piece, which was clearly a concern to us, and what happened at the Friary School in Lichfield and Kingsmead in Hensford is clearly unacceptable. I've been in touch with Ben Adams, and he, on Monday afternoon, spoke to the chief constable, and we have instructed Richard Harling to likewise speak to the chief constable. But they, I think they've got the message, they're looking at intel to see where these anti-vaxers are going to be, and they're going to act accordingly. Thank you.
Commissioner Jonathan Price.
Thank you. Yeah, there isn't a huge amount I can add to that, and thank you councillor McMahon. Just to say that the Covid education cell is still running, and is working very closely with our schools at the moment. And I do want to, again, praise schools, teaching staff and pupils for their resilience and the hard work. I am pleased to say that the rates were extremely high, but they're now starting to plateau, and in some areas have now started to come down. So we are seeing that pattern going forward, which is really, really good news. But we will continue to be vigilant, and we will, as we always have, continue to work with our schools and help them in any way we can. So, thank you.
Commissioner John Francis.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to ask, I tried to book up to my GP to get an appointment, and I've got in, but it's going to take six weeks for me to get there. And it's not very clever, that's number one. But I'm afraid this county council's done a fantastic job in the last 18 months, no doubt about that, and protecting a lot of our citizens from really becoming seriously ill. However, I wanted my flu back at the GPs, and the GP told me that they cannot get supplies. So I've done exactly what Johnny said, and we booked into a pharmacy, which is great. But I can't believe that we're running short of supplies for flu vaccine at this time of the year, when they've known it's coming, and we've got the outstanding outcome we've got on Covid vaccinations. And in my view, the children should have been vaccinated before they went back to school, because schools are now a breeding ground, and we've got two glasses out and about five staff, and marshals at the minute. So, and those parents have picked their Covid problems up from their children who went to Weston Road High School, so it's going around the county. I'd like to know what we're doing about that, John, to try and stop it.
Commissioner Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. We're at an interesting phase at the moment, and as this Covid-19 outbreak changes from a pandemic to endemic. And I think, looking back, and it's very easy to look back and say, that was good and that was a mistake, but I think I'd like to echo the comments of the way our staff and the NHS reacted right at the beginning of the pandemic. But as time's gone on, and there are one or two countries like New Zealand, who did what I call the foot and mouth policy of excluding everybody and shutting everything down, soon discover that they've got to face up to the fact that this is endemic around the world, and the problems that that causes. And luckily, we had a team at Oxford with the foresight, and also the two scientists in Germany who worked for Pfizer, to come up with a vaccination which will help suppress the disease. Not for everybody, but for probably 97%, 98%. There are a few who the vaccination isn't for them because of various health reasons. I've had my third one, had it a week ago, had a Pfizer on top of two AZ, and I've had my flu vaccination. I walked into a pharmacy, it took two minutes, instead of the 45-minute queue around the car park that I saw at my local surgery. Not a unique event, I'm afraid to say. But the issue is, get yourself vaccinated against Covid and influenza, because the other piece of advice I give is, don't watch the BBC too much. I'm getting a little bit tired of seeing 35,000 cases today, deaths are down within the last 28 days. It doesn't say death of Covid, it says people who've had it within the last 28 days. There are more people dying of influenza and pneumonia since last July, every month. It's all there on the ONS data, you can go and see it. So flu, and what the deputy national public health officer said, there could be up to 60,000 deaths, is something that we should be aware of, because we didn't have a flu outbreak last year. I know I'm just a simple peasant, Chairman, and I'm a farmer, but we've had biosecurity for years and umpteen outbreaks. This is very much like a brucellosis outbreak in the 70s when we had S19 vaccinations. There's lots of other things that we've had, people have forgotten about it. Bovine spongiform enkephalopathy and Jacob-Creuzefeldt disease, we were going to have thousands of people's dying. We were told, when they did the projections, that it would actually drop down. Professor Neil Ferguson is, Neil Ferguson, sorry, not Neil, Neil Ferguson, is, was one of those who was involved in the foot and mouth and wanted to kill all the sheep in the country to eradicate foot and mouth. I take, what Sage does is an independent body set up by themselves that gives advice. Some of it, you can take it or leave it. But, you know, I think you've got to be a measured approach to this, as we come out of the pandemic into the endemic, about how life's going to be in the future. And there are some who can't be vaccinated, and I think we should be concentrating on those. The 93%, 94% in care who've been vaccinated, think about whether, if all the residents have been vaccinated, is the 7%, are they a risk to the residents or a risk to themselves? It's the balance of change as we move along. I notice you put the things together about the business and health, but as we come out of this, and I'm seeing it at the sharp end, as you might say in my real life job which I've got back to, the shortages of certain things, they're like lorry drivers, you actually dig into it, is the DVLA not passing people's tests, nothing to do with lorry drivers going. There's no end of them, they've packed up because they don't like the life, it isn't right. There is going to be an absolute change in the way that this country operates with its skills, where some jobs who've had a pretty low view of for a number of years, who are going to be paid more money, and there are some jobs that are going to be paid less because we don't need them. That is out of the pandemic and what's happened.
Thank you. Commissioner Richard Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to thank Johnny McMahon in view of speaking to Ben Adams, and in turn the chief constable. The actions that occurred at the Friary School in Lichfield are absolutely deplorable. You cannot, you know, when the message that we, as politicians, going out into our communities to express that we must get vaccinated, and having these silver tin-potted hat people trying to undermine what's good, and that is the real point about what the vaccination programme is, it's good, and we should be there absolutely having support from our constabulary to ensure that kind of demonstrations outside our schools never occurs again. And thank you, Johnny, for taking that up on behalf of Lichfield district. Thank you.
Commissioner Colin Greatrix.
Chairman, I wasn't going to speak until I heard councillor Atkins mention the BBC and the stats. People will know that I'm something of a statistician, I enjoy that sort of analysis, heavily involved in stats most of my life. And the one thing about the figures that are produced every day is they give you the numbers of people who die. numbers of people who die with Covid. That's not the same as people dying of Covid. And that's something, although it's a 28-day figure now, there are a lot of people who would die, as councillor Atkins has said, with pneumonia or something else. So it's people who are having Covid put on their death certificate as being one of the reasons why they have died. So it's not just the same as people dying of Covid. And the other thing that I think, listening to other speakers, we've learnt a lot about the, the dealing with the, the virus. And initially, if you remember rightly, we were told to take our parcel deliveries in and unpack them and then go and wash your hands and then put the things away in the cupboard and then wash your hands again and so on and so forth. We've learnt that that's not really the means of transmitting the virus, it's more to do with respiratory problems. So therefore distance is important, wearing masks in crowded places is important and ventilation is important. I notice we haven't got a door open but I gather we've got a fairly large auditorium here and maybe that decision's been taken and we've got extractors going. Thank you, Mike. So they're the sort of things that we have learnt about how to deal with this pandemic. And I think the stats are always interesting. If you ever listen to, councillor Atkins refers to the BBC, but something that's well worth listening to is More or Less, where this analysis is given in quite some detail and very educational.
councillor Mrs Pedezi.
Thank you, chair. Chair, I think it's important to emphasise that this pandemic certainly is not over. None of us are safe until all of us are safe and only 2% of the entire continent of Africa has been vaccinated. Thank you, chair.
Thank you. Leader.
Thank you, chairman. There's a number of things that have been said during the course of the debate. I won't endeavour to sum them all up but just direct you to a couple of particular points. First of all, we benefit from having Dr Manu Agrawal in the chamber, who's a GP from the Cannock area. So we know that flu vaccine supplies are reinstated in most practices and have theirs at at least 80%. So that there is a build-up of this again. One shouldn't underestimate the logistical challenges and the clinical challenges of getting flu jabs into people and also continuing the effort to get Covid jabs into people. So there is a challenge there. The NHS and support services have risen to that really, really well and for that we're extremely grateful. Five-year death rates are broadly stable and the other point that was raised around eligibility for school vaccination programme to councillor Charlotte Atkins is that is determined nationally. We'll, we will be speaking to the NHS locally and see if there's local deviation is available to us because you raise a good point and we do need to be addressing that. Hopefully we can sort it out locally. councillor Francis, who's now no longer in the chamber, talked about GP access. That is a challenge. We're getting a sense from all of our electorate that GP access is a challenge. You'll have seen in the news this morning an additional £250 million has been put into improving primary care access. I'm not necessarily sure that chucking money at the problem will solve it. I think there perhaps needs to be a rethink about how people can access GP care because it is important to us. Many of us are reflecting on the illnesses that perhaps we've, and the conditions that perhaps we've put off seeing a doctor about for a while and now we want to go and see a doctor and hopefully GPs, primary care clinicians across the county in conjunction with Johnny McMahon can think about how we can solve that problem better. My final point, Mr Chairman, is to the anti-vaxxers that have turned up outside schools. I will support to the hilt the right to peaceful protest of any description as long as it remains peaceful. But what I cannot tolerate is the tin foil hat brigade that turns up wearing placards outside schools intimidating children. The point of protest is to influence decision-makers and members of the public who are of voting age and above. That's it. It is not to be shouting in the faces of 12-year-old children wearing masks, berating them for wearing masks. These people have no right whatsoever to do this and they have no right to intimidate children. And I can tell you their science, in inverted commas, is flawed stroke non-existent. So they should go away, they should leave the schoolchildren alone. If they want to protest, do it somewhere else. But I would suggest they do spend a little more time studying science and epidemiology before they actually engage in what is ridiculous protest involving children. Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Staffordshire Means Back to Business Oral Update. councillor Jeremy Oates.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. A short while ago, one of my colleagues in the chamber asked what was happening in, in his town. And I'm reading this paragraph and I'm going, hold on, it tells you there's a Future High Street Fund happening in, in his town in Stafford. And earlier we heard there's the Swar and we also heard about the Lichfield bypass. What's missing from this paragraph, and I wonder if I've upset the deputy leader by not accepting his offer for a coffee, is, is what's happening in Tamworth. We have a Future High Street Fund programme in Tamworth which successfully got £21.65 million from the government. On top of that, the local authority Tamworth Borough Council are putting nearly £4 million in. The local college are looking to invest £18 million and that will move the college into the town centre. Now that's great for the town centre, it drives footfall, but it's also an opportunity for South Staffs College to review the courses and the offer they have. They have a large campus in Tamworth which is inefficiently used, they have mothballed buildings which are no longer fit for purpose. This is an opportunity to not just generate our town centre but also drive forward with further education in the heart of, in the heart of Tamworth. On top of that, Mr Chairman, we've launched a website in Tamworth that covers other projects, including the Gungate project, which the county council are directly involved with as a, as a landowner. And that project all told includes new residential areas, new office space, potential leisure centre, and we're looking at spending £90 million on regenerating Gungate. So I just wanted to make sure this, I didn't miss this opportunity to promote the Transforming Tamworth website, thank the deputy leader for the involvement we've already had with the North Gungate elements of the Gungate redevelopment and just promote that we're looking to spend £130 million on bringing Tamworth Town Centre back to life and giving those opportunities for the people who live and work in Tamworth a chance to prosper and achieve their personal bests.
councillor Mark Whittington.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm going to actually sort of talk about Stafford, which is obviously my area. It is the county town and I'm really, really pleased that if you total up on the Stafford town itself in terms of the Future High Street deals and town deals, there's something in the, in the region of £47.6 million coming from all the partners, both private and public. That's fantastic. We do need to make sure that our town centres come back and are revitalised. However, we all know that these large projects don't happen overnight. It's got to go, these things have got to go through the grant process, the tendering process, planning process and then finally be delivered. So, so we're looking at somewhere, I would guess in the region of two to three years before we see, we see delivery, full delivery on these projects. I was really pleased to be part of the, of the process for high street funds, both at Newcastle, Kidsgrove and in Stafford. And it's brilliant and it, timing couldn't be better as we've, starting to come out of pandemic and starting to move, as councillor Atkins said, into endemic. And for information, bovine spongiform encephalopathy is BSE. You didn't actually clear that one up. However, as we start to move out of the pandemic to the endemic stage, I walked around Stafford yesterday and I was quite, quite upset. We've got to a stage now where there's closed shops, there's people begging and drinking on the streets, we've got fast food delivery drivers parked outside county buildings in a pedestrian area. And the pubs and hospitality, for us hospitality sector are telling me that the rating system's outdated and they hope they continue as time goes on, but it's, it's very much on a knife edge. And really it's just a plea to cabinet, because they are the major influences, to work with partners and try and address some of these issues because it's, it's really simple, if it's a nice place to come to, people will come to the county town and shop and private enterprise will start to, to take off again. It's about time that Staffordshire started to get firing on all its cylinders again. We need to sort of move on. And if anyone's concerned that I'm using a non-environmental description talking about firing on all cylinders, they need to go to JCB where they're running hydrogen engines and they are zero emissions. Thank you, chairman.
councillor Paul Northcote.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Staffordshire Means Back to Business, well, it certainly is in Newcastle. We see an unprecedented amount of money that's going to go into the regeneration of Newcastle Town Centre through the town deals and the Future High Street Fund. But what needs to happen is a collective and the collective is, and the conduits are there, the collective is Staffordshire County Council. And through work through the leader and deputy leader at Newcastle Council, myself at the Employment and Skills Working Group, we've managed to turn the advance funding that we've had provided by the government for us to invest in a hub in Newcastle, which is now called the Workshop. There's been collaborative work between Staffordshire County Council Team, Aspire, their charities, Realise, the charities and ourselves at the Borough. And it's, I'm pleased to say it's open, but I can report categorically that the oral update that we've received here, chairman, that we're seeing the fruition of this already. We're seeing the collaboration between companies that have signed up to take on young people through the Ignite Programme. We're seeing the vacancy rates quite high at the moment. We're not seeing that expected shortfall in terms of jobs and I can certainly confirm in Newcastle that it's higher than it was pre-Covid in terms of vacancies. So the vacancies are there through working with our partner agencies. So I'm really pleased that Staffordshire's actually buying into this. And I want to personally thank the deputy leader, cabinet member, for his hard work in making this happen. I know he's been working very hard in the background with his help and assistance he's given to Newcastle, myself via his team. And I'm really pleased to say that this in Staffordshire is, is a good indication of where things can progress and the positive things that we've got going in Staffordshire. And I concede this only going from strength to stamp as we've now got a permanent addition to Newcastle in the town centre where it needs to be, where people can access the workshop, they can get advice in terms of applying for jobs, but they can also look to upskill their work if they're thinking of a change of jobs. And for those that's an unfortunate position, have been unemployed, they can get signposted for the, the firms that have signed up to the workshop in Newcastle and we can actually tackle this head on. So I'm really pleased to see that the drive is still there from Staffordshire County Council and I for one, I want to thank the portfolio holder for achieving that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. councillor Steve Sweeney.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you for my colleague's support around me. Words, words and questions. I read this report, I was, I was a little disappointed because it said, high street funds including proposals for regeneration of Stafford Town Centre. Well, I think everybody in this room knows the jewel in Staffordshire's crown is of course Newcastle. So I think we, I think we perhaps expected that to be Newcastle. But nonetheless, we are where we are. The government's levelling up agenda, the government's believing in putting money into areas that need it. In Newcastle, we've received £34,648,260 of the government. This is, this is unheard of sort of money for Newcastle and it's a chance for the Borough Council and the county council working together, which is something that we've always done to transform, transform Newcastle. I don't want to bore people too long, so I'll just go through some of the things we're having. The old civic offices on, on the Ryecroft are going to come down. We've already moved into the new civic offices, which is a marvellous building, the old one's redundant building, that's going to come down. We're going to build a new multi-storey car park on there. We're going to flatten the old multi-storey car park, it's a 1960s concrete sort of horrible place. And like all concrete, only lives for so long. Sooner or later you spend so much money repairing it, you might as well just get rid of it. So we're doing that, all funded by this money. But other sorts of things, anybody who's ever been out in Newcastle may have heard of a place called Ritzy's or Zanzibar or even John Francis' age, you might have known it, the Crystal, great big nightclub out, that's, that's gone, ready to be redeveloped. Miss Rockfield there has talked about Nutton. These councils, this government is committed to all our areas and Nutton, for example, has got £3,716,000 going into it to do various things, 280 new houses, improved at Nutton Business Centre, new village hall, village green and play area for the people of Nutton. Now, Nutton's been a zone for him back on, I don't remember what it's called now for donkey's years, nothing's ever happened. It takes this government now to actually make things happen. Cross Street in Chesterston, that's another, another housing development that's being funded by this, that's going in there. Again, our, our areas, we, we're spending money around everywhere. Other things, electrical charging infrastructure is fairly obvious, town centre permeability, that's cycle routes and walkways and stuff like that. Sustainable transport public, transport solutions. Now, I've always got a thing about these, these bus stops where it gives you the bus times and when the next bus is coming. Because I'm waiting for a bus, I always get irritated, I start walking to the next one. As I'm walking to the next bus stop, the bus comes trundling past me. It winds me up. It does, yeah. Digital Society Centre, a new centre focused on digital skills provision and growing in space for new businesses, building on the smart Newcastle digital connectivity. It's firstly trying to make Newcastle an even better place to work, work, grow out in and live in. And that's what this money's going for. And I just, I can't commend really the government enough to give this, this is, this is real money, it's £35 million tax money going into Newcastle. We've never had anything like this and we can absolutely transform our town with this sort of funding. Now, there's also money going into Kidsgrove, but I know we've got a couple of Kidsgrove members on here who I'll let them talk about Kidsgrove, but that's all I've got to say. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. councillor Mike Sutherland, you're asking to speak but your light's not coming in.
How's that? Good morning. Listen, whilst I'm delighted with my fellow, hearing the news from my fellow Newcastle councillors on hearing about the good news this morning on this agenda item, but I do remind you colleagues, Cannock Chase also has a very strong case for help. The latest September claimants count show Cannock at 4.2%. What does that mean? Well, that's the second highest figure in Staffordshire. So I'll share with you what we're doing locally, but I'll also put a plea in. So as the new administration in Cannock, we are rightly focused on driving our economic recovery and development as quickly as possible and readily engage with partners to help us accelerate our programmes. But I am particularly encouraged with the results that we are beginning to see for Cannock by working alongside the county in a number of initiatives. And an example being apprenticeships, it's in, it's in the notes. This is a much welcomed report this morning from deputy leader Philip White. The latest number of apprenticeships approved for Cannock Chase is 50. You can see the numbers in the report. In that context, the overall number of approved apprenticeships, the Cannock number is impressive, but I want it to be more. So that's one, one area. Interestingly, I recently made a visit to the Cannock Chase Enterprise Park to see how the Staffordshire County Council grant monies had been used following the grant award that was made last year. They use that grant to convert the last of a building on that site that had been derelict for the best part of three, maybe four decades. The results are that they now have a further eight small business units ready to let. And I'm sure as I'm speaking that they are gone and some will be already occupied. They also have a long waiting list of small start-up businesses eager for the opportunity. But regrettably now, this enterprise site is full and, and... But regrettably now, this enterprise site is full and the waiting list is there. So the demand is evident, which is great news, particularly in the current environment. So I have an ask for the county to work with Cannock Chase District Council to identify other derelict sites within Cannock Chase that can be converted for small start-up units. We all know from a little acorn can grow an oak tree. We need many oak trees. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor David Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. I feel as I have some reservations on this item, particularly where we're starting to talk about supporting young people looking to start their own businesses. I'm fully in support of young enterprise. And we do have some young people that will set to and form the most fantastic businesses and go on to be multimillionaires and make great success of it. But I also know from my own experience, I was over 40 when I started my business. So I couldn't be seen by any reckoning to be a young entrepreneur. I applied for all sorts of government schemes which would have helped me get my business off the ground. And they were all turned down on the grounds that because of my expertise, I was unlikely to fail and my business would be successful. So if you look at young people that haven't had the opportunity to get that experience and to bring something, if you're talking to a client, the client expects you to bring something to the party. And if you look at what we're doing as far as apprentices are concerned, that's doing exactly the job that needs to be done. It's giving young people the expertise to be able to go forward, either with their careers, with employees, as employees, or to go forward and start their own businesses. But I feel a little nervous about the possibility of young people starting their own businesses. Perhaps in some cases, because they've got an idea which hasn't really been thoroughly explored and examined, they haven't got the business plans and all the sort of things that need to be done. So I hope that where we put money into potential new young entrepreneurs' businesses, we do actually thoroughly explore their expertise and their ability to make a success of it. Because the worst possible thing that we could do is to support young entrepreneurs, totally demoralise them as their businesses fail. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Mark De Ville.
Chairman, thank you. And it's wonderful to hear all the great things going on in Newcastle. And Mr Sutherland was speaking of the fantastic projects in Rugeley. It's right across Staffordshire, Chairman, isn't it? You know, we're seeing great development right across the county. And of course, you'd expect me to mention the Staffordshire Moorlands. We're very, very proud of the Moorlands, what's going on in the Moorlands. I'm attending a meeting this afternoon, Chairman, about some really exciting projects and much needed projects in Chedle. So I think it's, this development, this improvement, this feel-good factor is right across this county. Mr Winnington was talking about the bounce back, how the hospitality industry is bouncing back. You're right, Mark. And I said it would, I said in this chamber that we are a resilient lot in the hospitality industry, and we are. And I had immense pleasure in recently visiting Stone. I had a very, very enjoyable couple of hours in Stone and had the great pleasure of visiting, is it called the Crown Wharf, Mrs Hudd? What a project, colleagues. And I urge you, if you're in Stone or anywhere near to Stone, visit the new Joel's Pub in Stone, the Crown Wharf. It's amazing. There's a feel-good factor around this county, Chairman. This county is bouncing back. This bounce back doesn't just happen. It's a result of fantastic work by this County Council, working in partnership with the district councils and other partners. And in the darkest period of that damp pandemic, it was essential that industries such as hospitality were helped to stay afloat. Sadly, some didn't. But I think the grant aid from government that was administered through our district councils absolutely saved many, many businesses. Is there a feel-good factor in Staffordshire? Right across Staffordshire, absolutely, Chairman, there is.
Thank you. councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I've heard everything that's going on about the towns and all the work that we're doing to improve skills, but mine's more about, yes, it's Staffordshire means business, but we have got neighbours and we have got other things that we're involved with, such as Midlands Engine and Midlands Connects. And I can remember that we were supposed to have a feasibility study done about February this year on the North Midlands Manufacturing Corridor, which was a project along the lines of the A50, the A500 and the A46, linking two deep sea ports, what was back then, two HS2 stations, the airports and everything else. Project B at Utuxeter on the A50 is something that's pretty vital for places such as Rolls Royce, Bombardier, there's Bentley over in Crewe, and locally J C B and Alton Towers. If you order a digger today, you'll be waiting until next June before it's delivered. The order book is that for. So, and they are needing people as well. But the queues around that area on the B5030 are pretty immense. For people to enjoy town centres, they have to have money in the pockets. And the firms in my area and neighbouring areas, such as Mike Worthington, are employing lots of people, putting money in the pockets for them to spend in the town centres when they get home at night. So I just want to know, where are we with the North Midlands Manufacturing Corridor? Are we pushing for it? Are we really getting on with it? Because those are the things that are key as we make manufacturing a way that we come out of the pandemic and we all have wealth for ourselves to spend. And we can then have the services that we all desire for the residents of this county.
Thank you. councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chair. So just a couple of things to go out there. And I think the great thing, listening to all of that, is that it did most of my job for me because the activity that is going on in this county to support our businesses, to do what they do best, which is getting on with business and employing people and putting money into the pockets of families around the county, is there for all to see. Just picking a few points, I think the investment from central government into our area is manifest. So let's see if I can get them all. Stafford, Newcastle, Kids Grove, Burton-on-Trent and Tamworth have all benefited from levelling up fund or town deal money, or both in some cases. To councillor Oates, I'll upgrade my offer from a coffee to a pint. See if that gets me into your diary. But joking aside, we were sat next to each other at the opening of a digital skills centre in Tamworth only a couple of Fridays ago, weren't we? Projects being delivered on the ground. And to Mark Winnington's point about the variety of issues that we face, the solution to them is always the same, it's partnership working. And I think that is never better illustrated than in economic development work, where it is all the tears of government from central through to districts. It's local organisations like the LEPs and Chambers and others like the Police, Housing Associations doing their part where they need to, all to help the private sector get on with it. And let's not forget that, we're here to help, but it's to help the private sector get on with it. In terms of councillor Sutherland's ask regarding Cannock Chase District, there is actually one office available in the Enterprise Centre in Cannock at the moment. I just checked. So get there quick if you're after one. But there is a need for more. And I'm especially interested in Enterprise Centres as one of the ways in which we can support start-up and step-up businesses in Staffordshire. Staffordshire is a great place to start and grow a business. The success rates here are much higher than the national average. But we don't have enough of them, we need more. And our Enterprise Centres help with that. What we also need is more light industrial and small industrial units to go with the office space. And yes, we will work on that, including with Cannock. And in terms of supporting start-ups, to David Smith's point, we don't know what your pitch was, David, in terms of your business idea that got turned down. But what I can happily say today is if you have got a good business idea, there's a wealth of support locally here in Staffordshire, principally through the Growth Hub. But we have many, many schemes to do that. And it's one of the things that we've had a particular focus on. Regarding the very large projects that councillor Atkins mentioned, I think the leader might say one or two words about the North Midlands Manufacturing Corridor. But we are very actively engaged with Midlands Engine. We are now the accountable body for Midlands Engine. And we also regularly engage with Midlands Connect regarding infrastructure of a transport nature. And our last meeting with them was last week. And to close, that brings me round to the key points really. I know a lot of people have talked about levelling up and what does levelling up mean? And I think you can sum it up in three things, which is infrastructure, innovation and skills. And I think we've had lots of evidence today that all three of those things are areas where we're playing our part in helping to develop those areas and support the private sector in creating employment in Staffordshire for Staffordshire people. Thank you.
Can I remind members that everyone has an allocated seat in the chamber? Some people aren't sitting their own seats today because there's gaps. To help the officers, let me know who wishes to speak. You must press your own button, not the button next to you, else you're just coming with a number, not a name. It's happened three or four times now. But if you just please press the correct button, it does help everybody. Now call councillor Philip Hudson.
That's it. I'll get it right, lads, with a warning. We're having no confusion, Chair.
I thought perhaps you'd sent it me, Mr Chairman, because I was sitting next to Derek. I'm sorry councillor White, I did want to speak before you came back. I fully support my colleague councillor Atkins, because we have the divisions next to each other. I'm also his Borough councillor for the rural areas. And the A50 corridor is very important to us because I'm getting lots of residents from Utuxeter asking about it, when's it happening? What's happening? Is this going to affect where we live? Philip and myself have some ideas for some projects that we want to do in Crown Division. That depends on what happens with the A50 corridor. Another thing that I think that we need is that we need to keep a watching brief as County Council on the situation at Elts, Biscuits and Utuxeter. It's up for consultation, the local people are very worried about employment there. Will the business be bought and carry on? You know, will we be looking at helping another business start up there? So the local residents of Utuxeter want us to keep a watching brief on this. And I was very disappointed, Mark, when I was driving through Onkirk the other week to find that the Admiral Jarvis is closed down because of the lack of staff. They can't get staff. And I can't believe if we've got all these vacancies, that we can't get staff within our pubs. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
councillor Jill Burnett.
Okay. Sorry, I wanted to speak before as well, Philip. I just wanted to say, as a county councillor for Kids Grove and a trustee of Kids Grove Sports Centre, I wanted to share with you what a wonderful opportunity the town deal investment for Kids Grove is. 16.9 million plus 750,000 advanced deal, town deal funding, making grand total of 17.6 million for Kids Grove, which you will agree is fantastic and is a major step forward in redeveloping Kids Grove into a lively and diverse centre of activity for all. The advanced town deal money has been allocated to a new pump track, upgrades to Cluffall Park, the King's School for 3G Astro pitches. And the 16.9 million town deal money has been allocated to the much-wanted sports centre, which is on course to reopen in the spring of 2022. Kids Grove Railway Station, which has got new lifts going in as we speak, giving access for all and a new car park, creating new jobs at Chatterley Valley for Kids Grove and Torque residents, a shared service hub in the town. These developments will continue to establish Kids Grove, will provide job opportunities in Kids Grove and Torque and provide modern, safe and fun services for all our residents. Kids Grove will no longer be the forgotten town thanks to this marvellous town deal funding. And I just want to say, I'm so pleased about it. Thank you.
I'll take one more caller on this path of the agenda, councillor Jill Waring, and then I'll bring the leader in.
Thank you. I just want to add to Jill's comment about the funding in Kids Grove and the fantastic pump track that we managed to get in My Ward. Already, millions of circuits have been done by our children who've been stuck indoors, you know, on the computers, laptops, whatever else. It's absolutely fantastic, it's the best thing we've ever had in Kids Grove. This money that was provided for Kids Grove is more than I've ever known in my lifetime and for there all my life. And I just think it's absolutely wonderful. And we are, it's going, you know, a long way to helping our obese children. We do have a high number of obese children in Kids Grove. And it's just absolutely wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And isn't it wonderful to see how many jewels in the crown we have across Staffordshire? But it turns out if that jewel happens to be a pint of beer, it's either pronounced jewels, joles or jowls, depending on where you come from in the county. A quick word to Phil Hudson, don't let Derek touch anything, he's got a magic finger. Everything he touches breaks, so don't let him touch your button. To the North Midlands Manufacturing Corridor, which is part of the Midlands Engine package of activity. The North Midlands Manufacturing Corridor is a concept which sees the linking of the two deep sea ports across England. It was just a concept. And now I convened a meeting of the leaders of Stoke and Staffs, Nottingham, Nottinghamshire, Derby, Derbyshire, Leicester and Leicestershire, to get that political buy-in to the idea of creating the North Midlands Manufacturing Corridor so that it becomes an ask of the Chancellor of the Exchequer when the Comprehensive Spending Review takes place on the 27th of October and afterwards. That is now going to be part of the ask for Midlands Engine going forward. But it is worth bearing in mind the North Midlands Manufacturing Corridor is more than just bridges and bypasses. I met with Lord Bamford to discuss his interest in the North Midlands Manufacturing Corridor. And his is a very significant, around £200 million request for a bridge and a junction and other things. It is more than that. We've got to create economic value as part of the North Midlands Manufacturing Corridor. We're determined to do that. I'm in detailed dialogue with the chairman of the Midlands Engine to make that happen. But in conclusion, what a lot of good news around the chamber. And absolutely fantastic that members have been able to share with all of us the examples of great work that's going on in their area. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Call off contract for supply of I C T equipment and services. Part of the bringing in the alderman. Even though I've called that item, I'm now going to, there's a number of speakers involved, I'm now going to adjourn the council session until after lunch. And that will be the first item we resume with after lunch. If you can be back in here for 12 o'clock for the alderman presentations. After that, we'll have photographs on the steps with the new alderman, followed by lunch. And I'll tell what time we want back after lunch, after we've done the next session. Thank you.
Complete people, councillors, please take their seats.
Complete people, councillors, please take their seats. Thank you for being back so punctually. Section 249 of a Local Government Act, 1972 authorises the county council to confer the title of honorary alderman on persons who have, in the opinion of the county council, rendered eminent services to the council as past members of the council but who are no longer councillors. The purpose of today's meeting is to seek the approval of the county council to confer the title of honorary alderman on four former members of the county council. I intend to move all four motions to consideration. We'll then invite the leader of the council and the lead of the opposition to say a few words. Mr Ben Adams. That in accordance with section 249 of a Local Government Act, 1972, the title of honorary alderman be conferred on Ben Adams of Burntwood in the county of Stafford in recognition of his eminent services as a past member representing the Perry Crofts Tamworth County Electoral Division on the county council from 2009 to 2021. Mrs Maureen Compton. That in accordance with section 249 of a Local Government Act, 1972, the title of honorary alderman be conferred on Maureen Compton of Stafford in the county of Stafford in recognition of her eminent services as a past member representing the Stafford Central Stafford County Electoral Division on the county council from 2005 to 2009 and also from 2013 to 2021. Mr Derek Davis, OBE. That's in accordance with section 249 of a Local Government Act, 1972, the title of honorary alderman be conferred on Derek Davis of Hensford in the county of Stafford in recognition of his eminent services as a past member representing the Chadsmore Cannock Chase County Electoral Division on the county council from 1985 until 2021. Mrs Susan Woodward. That's in accordance with section 249 of a Local Government Act, 1972, the title of honorary alderman be conferred on Susan Woodward of Burntwood in the county of Stafford in recognition of her eminent services as a past member representing the Burntwood North Lichfield County Electoral Division on the county council from 2005 to 2009 and also from 2013 to 2021. I will now call the lead of the county council to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you for the opportunity to speak and welcome to Sue and Maureen. It's lovely to see you here again once more. These are wonderful occasions when we recognise the contribution that people have made to this authority over many years. It would be facile of me to endeavour to list out the achievements that they have made over their time as a county councillor, the committees they have served on or other contributions they have made as a result of their time here at Staffordshire County Council. What we're here to do is just reflect upon that commitment that they have made and to celebrate that with the conferring of the title of honorary alderman of the county of Staffordshire. I know that Ben Adams can't make it because he's got another engagement elsewhere, I believe in London, and Derek Davis's health isn't what it could be. But to Maureen and Susan who are able to be here in person, congratulations. It is well deserved. Thank you for everything you've done for the county of Staffordshire. And please, we look forward to you receiving this award in a moment. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
I now call Mrs Charlotte Atkins.
Thank, thank you, Mr Chairman. It's a great privilege to serve as a county councillor. And to serve over 12 years just demonstrates a real commitment, a real commitment to the council, to your communities and, and to your residents. Because very often you don't get a lot of thanks for it. But it is a privilege which I know all four recipients of this award very much value. And although they have stopped being county councillors, I know that in most cases they continue to serve their communities because that commitment is lifelong. And although, of course, I very much miss my colleagues in the chamber, I know that they're going on to doing other things within their communities and that demonstrates their lifelong commitment. So I'd like to congratulate both Sue and Maureen, but obviously Ben and Derek as well, and hope that many of us will be able to aspire to that sort of service in future years. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Mark Sutton.
It's accidentally been pressed.
Councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just going to, I thought it a bit remiss not to say something about the contribution that Sue, Maureen and Derek, who sadly can't be here, and Ben, have made to the county council. It is an honour to serve on the county council and for the electorate to put you here. But people have gone above and beyond the, the line of duty, which is what being an alderman is about. And although we may sit on opposite sides of the chamber, we're still friends outside. We've just had a bit of banter outside with Sue. And I've always thought that that is part of it. And all four of them, in their own way, have always maintained that personal friendliness, even when we've had the, the banter in this chamber. And I think I'm really pleased to see that Maureen and Sue, that you're here today to be made alderman or older persons, I don't know. And before Sue takes me to task. And, and Derek, who was a county councillor from 1981 till, till this year. That is a phenomenal achievement to, to serve that length of time. And despite them trying to unseat him in his branch selection because he didn't believe in unilateral nuclear disarmament. I've got that one right. And, but, you know, and Ben, who served in and has gone on to greater things as Police and Crime Commissioner. So, and I see that, and it's good to see the leader of Burntwood Town Council in here today, receiving her alderman's prize. I see her on different Google things and she's still active. And it's good to see Maureen and out and about. So thank you, Chairman. And thank you for the opportunity to say a few words about them all.
Thank you. I will now ask the council, is it your decision that these awards should be granted?
Aye.
I think that's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you to everybody. Two, or four awards being given. Unfortunately, two recipients can't be here. And Derek, we all know how hard Derek has worked over the years. He's from my area. I was on the district council for his wife Muriel and it's such a shame that his health has deteriorated so quickly. But yeah, and Ben, as Philip Atkins says, he's gone the opposite direction. Let's just hope he has a great career as our police commissioner. I'm now going to adjourn for lunch. We're going to have a photograph taken on the stairs for posterity of the, those who are sitting in the council at present. The photograph should take about five minutes. So we say we're back from lunch at five past 12. Would that be all right with everybody? So five past one, sorry, five past one. Five past one. I've, I've got Derek's time machine, I'm sorry. So five past one, please. Can you take your seats, please? Good afternoon and welcome back, everybody. Before we start, can I just make one announcement? During the people over lunch, some people don't know that the vice chairman has broken his leg in accidents at home two weeks ago and will be out of action for six to eight weeks. He is bored. He's an action man, he likes to be doing things out and about. So if you do have time, five, 10 minutes, which probably lasts an hour if you call him. But he would, he would appreciate phone calls, cheer him up. He would. Pardon? He will be on virtual, yes. Okay. We'll leave that there, though. Okay. We, we broke item 13 of a leader statement, developing family hubs in Staffordshire. Councillor Anne Edgela.
Sorry. Thank you very much, Chairman. The children's centres have done a brilliant job throughout this pandemic and I know in my own division, through the children's centre, many families have received food parcels organised by volunteer groups. And one lady in particular, who will remain nameless, but without her help, the job would have been very difficult to administer. Early years, as we all know, is the most important part of a child's life. Councillor Sutton, moving forward with the development of the children's centre, will they incorporate guidance and help for children, for children needing mental health support? Please. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Mrs Atkins.
Chairman, while I appreciate the thinking behind the development of family hubs, my concern is that we're not, we, we don't lose our focus on early years provision because children's centres have always been brilliant at bringing together a range of services essential to ensuring that every child has the best start in life. And those early years, you know, can't be frittered away. They're really vital in terms of development goals. And this is particularly important for deprived communities. All the evidence shows that the investment in early years pays huge dividends for children as they grow up, whether it be physical health or indeed mental health. So can you assure me that the early years focus will not be diluted by the development of family hubs? Thank you.
Councillor Kieflunder.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to support Anne in what she said about the family hubs and the children's centres and what's been going on. Several of my parishes have been contacted and virtually through the family hubs during the pandemic and the services that they've received and been advised of has been exemplary. I would also like to echo what Charlotte said about the early years. The family improvement boards have been concentrating on this for some time now and they've done a brilliant job at improving their communication systems and what's been going on. I've been kept very, very well informed of the fib within my own district and my own division. And the whole thing has been coming together absolutely fantastically, even with the restrictions that have gone on through the pandemic. My question really is to ask about the extension and the further expansion of the family hubs ideas into family and community hubs, which is something that I've brought up in the past and mixed with some elements of mental health provision and everything else within the communities. So my ask is would be that we can look at and promote the idea of promoting, the idea of community hubs, perhaps within villages and other areas and community centres, and use volunteers. And those volunteers that came through during the pandemic would be up for retraining and to look at those things. And I just think that that's something that would be very, a very nice way, a nice neat way of coming into and out of the pandemic and into a more positive environment for many of the people that need these services. I've in fact been asked by two of my parishes to present what we mean by supportive communities, what we mean by place-based approach and all the others. I've seen presentations that have been available now and I will hope that we can develop something that all of us as members can take forward, both into the districts and within the, the, what are they called? I can't remember now, MCVs, the boroughs as well. So I think, I think that would be fantastic if we could do that as members and take some responsibility going forward. It will be difficult to link up with these groups. I, for example, have a church group and having the idea of some additional information that that would be fantastic on Monday mornings. It's the Monday Caffet Enden Church. They're looking also supporting or having some support for my community fund. So it all links together. That's the point I think I'm trying to make. And if we can also link up with other ideas like youth clubs and other community groups, I think the whole thing would, would benefit greatly if we could have a sort of a structure and some element of strategy going forward to be able to, to enhance all those services. Thank you.
Councillor Mark Sutton.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chairman. Firstly, can I just thank three colleagues who have just spoken regarding children's centres and, and family hubs? And I'll answer their questions in a, in a, in a short while. The core purpose of children's centres is to improve outcomes for young people and their families and reduce inequalities between families in the greatest needs and their peers in relation to child development and school readiness, parenting aspiration and parenting skills, child and family health and life chances. And to support our strategic ambitions for children, young people and families, the county council is seeking to work with families and partners across the statutory, private, community and voluntary sectors to develop family hubs, which ensure children, families with children aged between 0 to 19 and those up to 25 with disabilities. aged between nought to nineteen and those up to twenty-five with disabilities have access to the right help at the right time. But as we develop the family hub model, which was a government commitment in their last manifesto to develop across the country, we will ensure that there is a emphasis on early help and prevention with communities of Staffordshire, support families to achieve and maintain positive outcomes and seek to prevent need from escalating in the first place. So the family hubs will build on what the children's centres already do. They will offer information, advice and guidance and support across the whole spectrum, including absolutely mental health and wellbeing support to be able to point people in the right direction for that. And although they will now be nought to nineteen, it is absolutely essential that there is still a concentration on the early years element of it. Because as be alluded to and mentioned particularly by Mrs Atkins, this is absolutely essential to the development of children going forward, so that will not be lost in this process. And then come to the last point that Mr Flunder made around how we go out into the community. Because children's centres are in one location, but localities are much bigger than that. So there is an absolute need to sort of spread the children's centre or the family hub across the whole of the district or borough by potentially using other sites, volunteers, feeding in, who are able to relate that information across the whole of the borough or district. Thank you, Mr Chair.
councillor Mrs Padasey.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. My understanding is that part of the reason of setting up these hubs, it's all about preventative work, identifying issues that can be nipped in the bird, whether they're issues of behaviour, health and so on. And the point about youth centres was made. So I don't understand why we get rid of so many sure start centres, youth centres in the first place. We need to listen more when we're warned that if we cut our services too much, all we're doing is creating problems for the future. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Johnny McMahon.
Thank you, Chair. It's just in response particularly to Keith Flunder's questions and remarks, I'm happy to tell the chamber that our supportive communities offer was shortlisted to the last six in terms of the municipal journal awards recently. We didn't win, but they were clearly impressed by what we had to offer. And we're not just concentrating on the frail elderly for the supportive communities offer, but to all those who are vulnerable and in need. And we would welcome the opportunity to help in this regard.
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm delighted to see that this authority is taking the family hubs programme forward. We can lament what happened in the past, but that doesn't serve any purpose whatsoever. We address the issues that we are facing today. We come up with solutions to those issues we are facing today. And with councillor Sutton looking after this, the development of family hubs in Staffordshire is in safe hands, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. High-needs provision capital allocation funding. councillor Jonathan Price.
Thank you, Chairman. This item shows that this county and cabinet and all members here are fully committed to the SEND agenda. And this is a good news story that feeds into that. Government have recognised that there is a shortage of spending, particularly around the high-needs capital programme, and we've been allocated an additional £2.44 million. The aim of the funding is to deliver new places and improve existing provision in education settings for children or young people with special educational needs and disabilities, particularly those with more complex needs, and with an education, health and care plan. Although funding can be used to support SEND pupils without an EHCP and pupils that require alternative provision, key areas of need for Staffordshire have been identified, including developing resource bases at mainstream schools for children with educational healthcare plans and SEN support with social, emotional and mental health needs. And some examples of those have already been rolled out. My predecessor, deputy leader, Philip White, and I set up a unit in Tillington Manor Primary School within Stafford, and that has proven to give a hundred percent success rate in signposting children in the appropriate places where they need the most support. There is another example in Huntingdon, which I visited, which is of a similar scheme, and that's had a very, very good success rate as well. And there's a secondary provision within Cannock, and this is something we want to roll out across the county going forward, in those places where it is required. And the purpose of this is to make sure that children who are in special schools not necessarily should be there and actually could get the right support in the right place as moderate learners within mainstream settings. And it is recognised that not every child with an educational healthcare plan required an educational healthcare plan but actually needed earlier support. And this capital funding enables us to put those resources in place to be able to identify the needs of those children. So I really, really welcome this. I hope all members have had the opportunity to read our SEND strategy, which has recently been approved, which we drew up with our partners. And that highlights what this authority and others' intentions are to support children with FCND across the board. One of those priorities is priority four, which states, wherever possible, children with access education placements that are close to home, and to help develop friendship in their local community and promote independence. And it's absolutely key that we keep our children as close to home as possible, in the right setting and with the right support. And this money also goes some way towards helping us being able to develop that. Thank you very much.
Strategic review of the care home market in Staffordshire 2021. councillor Mrs Gillian Padasey.
Thank you, Chair. This report tells us, Chair, that COVID-19 had a profound effect on care homes. I think we need to set the record straight on that. It was not COVID-19 that had a profound effect on care homes, it was the policies that were put in place that caused the devastation in our care homes. We were lied to, and that's the only word for it, that there was a ring of protection around these care homes. Our care homes were turned into hospices. There was a deliberate, willful, knowing policy of discharging infected people back into care homes. And you don't need to be an Einstein to know what the devastating results of that would be. In addition, do not resuscitate orders were being put into files of people without them knowing and without their loved ones knowing. So it was not COVID-19 that had that impact, it was the deliberate policies that were having that impact. And the staff recruitment, retention issue is one of our own making. We sent our most undervalued, overworked, underpaid staff, most of whom were women and disproportionately women of colour, unprotected, we sent them quite literally to their deaths. It was not COVID-19 that did that, it was the policies and our failures that did that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Mark Willington.
Thank you, Chair. I was quite sad to hear the statement that councillor Padasey just made. I'm a non-executive director of Nexus Cares. Now, for anyone who doesn't know, Nexus Cares is an arms-length provider for incidences around the enablement of people from hospitals back to their own homes. It's almost an organisation of last resort when the system, for whatever reason, has a problem. Now, there's two other directors in here, so it's not just me, there's the chair's in the corner, Helen, and Mark Deville. So we are all really interested, along with all the directors, in what's happening there. Now, I wasn't going to say any of this, but the picture that's just been painted of what is almost sounds like a death camp, the way it was described, is horrendous. And in terms of staff retention, the staff that work in the industry are heroes. And we talk about the NHS heroes, those people who looked after older people over the COVID time, really, really, really did a great job. And I think we've had letters go from the chair of Nexus to staff saying how well they've done. And this is obviously quite pertinent at the moment. But I say, I'm really sad at the picture that was painted there, because anyone who's lost an older relative, it's almost a stab in the eye for them. So I'm really, really sad about that. But anyway, getting back to Nexus Cares, I'm going to be slightly cheeky, Chairman, and just take the chance to thank a couple of staff. Richard Harling and Helen Taysdale have helped us incredibly, and the staff that are behind them in commissioning. And again, if you want an example of caring people, please go and have a word with them, don't just take out some strange bit of something you read somewhere. We've got a great CEO in terms of Claire Moldoney and also Laura Lotthorne, all people that have worked without any need for thanks over the period, and they're still continuing now. In fact, Nexus has just taken on two care homes, so that's the next iteration of Nexus. Getting around to the report in front of us, there is a fall in demand, we all know that, and partly due to COVID-19, not policy, and also the fact that a lot of older people have been worried about going into accommodation as we go forwards. So for me, this temporary situation where we've got excess of supply won't last forever. Most of us in this chamber in twenty-five years will be needing this. Twenty-five per cent of people in twenty years will be needing this. Sorry, but that's life, that's where we are. And I'll come and visit you, Keith, when you're in your dotage. So it is important, we have papers like this, that look at the most vulnerable, what they need, how we look after them in the future, and I don't need to ask the question, but I will or make the statement, because I know it will be done by officers and by members alike, but we've got to keep that quality and care in our care homes, because at the end of the day, it's our mothers and fathers and relatives. And in twenty-five years, Keith, it will be us. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Mark Deville.
Chairman, thank you. I'm not saddened by councillor Padasey's remarks, I'm appalled, Chairman, by councillor Padasey's remarks. We are talking about the county of Staffordshire, and Mark Willington is spot on with the work, the excellent work, the above-excellent work that Nexus Care has done in this county. Chairman, as a fellow director, I need to declare the necessary administrative interests. Councillor Padasey, instead of apportioning blame and responsibility for the tragic, tragic deaths that we suffered in Staffordshire, why don't you go over to Nexus Care and see the excellent work, the work above and beyond their responsibilities that Nexus, a part of the county council that you're a part of, are doing and have done in the most difficult times, Chairman, I think in our lifetime. So I think it's appalling to start apportioning blame and responsibility, and much better, Chairman. And I think the people of Staffordshire would be appalled to hear that, because I think they're very smart and hardworking people of Staffordshire, understand that Staffordshire County Council with partners did everything during the times of this pandemic. Nexus Care did everything. The provision of PPE in Staffordshire was a beacon across the nation, Staffordshire was the best. The provision of boxes of food and essential supplies across this county were exemplary, providing essential supplies to the people who need it most. So I won't even bother asking councillor Padasey to withdraw that remark, because I think it's obvious. We're talking about this county, we've very, very tragic, tragic losses we've suffered in this county, but we are so proud, Chairman, all of us, right across this chamber, of the work that this county has done with its partners, fighting the pandemic that we've so sadly gone through. And I think now is the time, Chairman, that the people of Staffordshire and the people of this nation want to hear positives. They want to hear the positive work that people have done during the pandemic, and they want to hear positive things about moving out of the pandemic. And I think that the previous speaker's comments were quite frankly appalling, Chairman.
councillor Johnny McMahon.
First and foremost, I would want to echo councillor Deville's remarks. This was entirely uncalled for. I would like the chamber to recall that this is the greatest peacetime tragedy that has befallen this nation in modern times. I would like to draw your attention to the flu pandemic of a hundred years ago. It affected a quarter of the world's population, killing fifty million. And given the fact that the world's population was a fraction of what it is now, that just shows you what pandemics can do. And to say that it was the system and not the virus that created this is just complete nonsense. I'd like to say a few words about do not resuscitate. Do not resuscitate requires the signature of a doctor, requires the doctor to speak to the patient if they're competent, or to the relatives if they're not competent. The idea that they are dished out willy-nilly in this county is utter rubbish. In fact, when I was CCG chair, I don't think that the doctors spent enough time with relatives to do DNRs enough in order to be kind to the patients. I can't think of a remark that's more out of kilter, if I may say. No care home in this county did without PPE throughout the pandemic. I'll say that again, no care home did without PPE throughout this pandemic. Twenty-seven million went to support the care home sector during this pandemic. If you would, Chair, I would like to take the opportunity to come back in, if the chamber would want me to, about the actual content of this report, not about the past, but about the future. Because the future is all about supporting a system that's had a terrible, terrible time, but has had unprecedented nationwide leading support from ourselves. Thank you.
councillor McMahon, you have three minutes left, if you want to keep going, in that three minutes, to give us the future.
You, Chair.
To give us the future.
Understandably, understandably, people are nervous about going into a care home at the moment. So the normal occupancy runs at ninety-five per cent, it's currently running at somewhere around seventy-seven. That means they're not getting the income that they would normally get, the costs of running a care home have gone up because of the pandemic, the staff issues, as highlighted, are there. And some of the premises are quite old, and therefore they find it difficult to be infection compliant. And therefore, we have to help them as best we can. And that's what this report is about. They like the dynamic purchasing system, the markets come back to us and said they like it. So what we intend to do is to modify it to help the market. Because the one thing they did say was that the system was a bit clunky. Because the one thing they did say was that the system was a bit clunky, particularly the IT aspect. So that's what we're going to do. They like the block-booked system, and we like it. That gives some degree of financial certainty to both parties. So we will extend that. And in doing so, we will continue to support the care home market in what is a very challenging and unpredictable future because of the pandemic, not because of anything that we have done. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Mrs Atkins.
Thank you, Chair. What I want to do is come in and comment really on councillor Pardaisi's comments because I think we'd be shutting our eyes and ears to the reality of the situation if we didn't, for instance, read the parliamentary report, report of two select committees, one of health and one of science, which looked at the mistakes made during the Covid pandemic. And one of the key areas of mistakes was the way that people were discharged into care homes without being tested. At our own Health Select Committee, I asked the question of the Royal Stoke. When did they start testing people discharged from the hospital before they went into care homes? I can't remember the date off the top of my head, but I think it was something like April the 17th. So there was a full month of people being discharged from that hospital into care homes without them being tested. That was seeding Covid into care homes. And I appreciate that because of the logistical expertise in the county council, that we had a good supply of PPE. I think it was 1.4 million pounds was spent on PPE in Staffordshire. But the reality was, over the country as a whole, many care homes and indeed many hospitals didn't have sufficient PPE. And it's also the case that a disproportionate number of care workers and hospital workers, particularly those from ethnic minority groups, did succumb to Covid. So let's not be very ready to condemn what councillor Pardaisi has said because the reality is that there were lots of mistakes made as a result of the Covid pandemic. We didn't lock down sufficiently early. We didn't... The COBA committee didn't have the support of the Prime Minister. He missed, I think, the first five. So it wasn't given the priority it deserved. I think many of us at the start of this whole process didn't really believe it was going to be as serious as it was. I think most people wouldn't have done. But the point is that government failed in many instances to understand the importance of following some of the lessons of other countries that had a far lower death rate than we did. So let's please not be complacent about the way that... Don't worry, Jill. That don't be complacent about the way that we dealt with the pandemic. Big mistakes were made, and unfortunately, the care homes in particular lost many more people than they should have done. And I think that the carers, I think as someone said earlier, were absolute heroes. And I continue to be heroes despite the fact that they are underpaid, under-resourced, and underappreciated. I think now that they are beginning to be more appreciated. But they were at the front line, just as nurses and doctors were on the front line, and they were perhaps even more vulnerable to infection. So let's be aware of the mistakes that were made and not be complacent because complacency will lead, the next time we have a pandemic, to the same mistakes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Ian Parry.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to check that Mrs Atkins didn't have any minutes left. Sorry, Chairman, you have a miscareer and continuity, perhaps. I also wanted to speak to councillor Pardaisi's point because whilst it was driven to make a political point and to perhaps was politically charged and weaponised, I think there's an element of truth in what she was saying as councillor Atkins was also reminding us of the two parliamentary committees that did report this week and did highlight the errors that were made. Let's not forget, as councillor McMann was saying, this is the biggest crisis that's affected our country since the Second World War. And let's not assume or imagine that there were no lessons to be learned. There are serious lessons to be learned. And, you know, right to point out that PPE was not available from the off, that care homes and the risks to them were perhaps underestimated or overlooked or not fully and effectively managed. And that there were errors that took place. And I think we've probably not given full credit and understanding and awareness of the crisis that took place in care homes during that period, particularly during the early part, and the way they had to crisis-manage that situation. And to take part, as the rest of the country did, in a daily lesson of managing uncertainty. And when you are in that position of having to manage constantly change and new threats and new challenges, there are bound to be mistakes made. And tragically, when mistakes are made in something like this, lives are lost. Lost. And people are desperately affected by it. So I don't think, I'm certainly not pretending that mistakes weren't made by this government. Of course there were. And if we don't learn from them, then we are the poor for it. But I think actually the response is as important, isn't it? That the response to acknowledging the issue, the problem, that has not been fully addressed and then addressing it is the right thing to do. So I think once those things were sorted, that this country, as well as, if not better than, any other country in the world, actually has handled this pandemic in an exemplary way. What this paragraph really talks to is what's going to happen next. What we've witnessed is a dramatic shift in the demand for residential care. And the effect that that has on both the supply side, those organisations involved in providing those beds and nursing care, et cetera, and the demand side, the families that require some form of care, residential care, nursing care, et cetera. What's been happening to them when they've decided not to go into a home? Where are they? Who's looking after them? What kind of provision are they being given? There are some interesting questions to be asked, I think, there, and I'm sure they've been addressed. But moving forward, what happens next? Let's not forget, this is a market. This is a supply situation and a consumer situation. If we allow this to fragment and to implode, that would have serious long-term consequences for people needing this kind of care in the county. So we can't stand back and say, this is not for us. This is the care market to sort out. Because we obviously procure from that market. We are a customer, if you like. So we have to make sure that we act responsibly in a much more challenged and changed operating environment to ensure that there is a level of stability moving forward. Doesn't change there, of course. You know, changes in the recent announcements about the cost of care and the taxation around care, et cetera, will add further complications and adjustments to be made within that sector. So this is an ongoing problem to manage, one that's probably at the height, at the highest level of priority for the council in terms of ensuring that this does not break down and that provision and care can continue to be provided in the future in a market which is able to sustain itself.
Thank you. Just to let people know, I didn't give Johnny McMann any particular... No, just assistance. He had a total of four minutes and 40 seconds, so he never reads the five-minute ruling. You had five, sorry, four minutes and 53 seconds. So you had longer. councillor Jill Hood.
Thank you, Chairman. I heard the gasps of horror go around the chamber as councillor Pardaisi began to speak. And yes, some of the things that she said, in particular the do not resuscitate, I'd like to know where she gets the evidence from and absolutely don't agree with that, but support what Johnny McMann said. But we can't sweep this under the carpet. Whether we like it or not, our elderly were sent to care homes with Covid, infected other residents within the care homes, infected staff. And it was the most appalling death sentence. I work closely with many, many elderly people in my stone urban division. And it always saddens me when a relative is due to come out of hospital and they get in touch with me and beg me, please, they can't go into a care home, they'll die in a care home. And I see the struggle, and it's recently happening to a friend of mine, a very close friend of mine, I see them struggle with that relative, knowing that they can't possibly cope, and carers come in. And it's just so sad. So then I move on to the very eloquent speech made by councillor Winnington. As always, when we're on this subject, Nexus comes up. Now, I have a very strong personal connection to Nexus. I don't think I need to declare an interest because it's not pecuniary. I have never met carers as such a high quality as Nexus employs. And believe me, if a carer is late, they apologize, or there's a phone call. They go above and beyond the duty that's expected of them. And when anyone says to me, can you recognise a caring business? I always say Nexus with two Xs. You can't get better. They are so short-staffed. The turnover of staff is very sad. The person who I'm involved with, with Nexus, goes to rely on their carers, loves their carers, and then suddenly they're gone. As a nation, we should be ashamed of how much our carers are paid, considering the skills that those carers have to put forward during their job. You know, they're probably more experienced and more qualified without paper qualifications than the nursing staff. And it always seems that because of the poor pay, quite often, I'm not talking about Nexus, but quite often, these care providers have people who shouldn't be in that profession. We have to support our carers. We have to make sure that they're paid their worth. I didn't know that Nexus had care homes. I'm quite surprised, but I imagine that's quite recent. But they're fantastic. But really, we talk about PPE. I know for a fact there was not enough PPE in the care homes. They may do. It was extremely difficult to get. So that's all I've got to say on this. I do support some of what Mrs Pardaisi said, but some I absolutely do not. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Philip Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I think there's three phases that all of the speakers have spoken about, the past, the present, and the future in this paragraph. Not dwelling too much on the past, but anybody can pick fault with actions that people have done. And also ignore the good work that went on. I can remember when the pandemic first started as a county council, we looked to source our own supplies of personal protection equipment so that nobody could go short that the care homes had gotten them, rather than rely on some national procurement and then take our turn. In fact, by early buying, it kept the cost down because if you have just in time, it costs an awful lot more. I dare say, if patients hadn't come out of hospital and gone into the care homes, and yes, there could have been mistakes made about testing if the test kits were available, I presume the NHS or the care homes would have been damned for not taking people out of hospitals and freeing up hospital beds vitally needed for people who were suffering from a disease that was killing people in their hundreds a day. That would have been something to say about. The present is that people are worried and concerned and perhaps taking more care of their elderly at home rather than putting them in a care home. So that has affected the market, as it is called. With 70s percent occupation, a lot of care homes won't be viable. So providing more care home places at this time would just push more over the edge. For the future, well, I've always looked up to care home workers. They do a job that most of us wouldn't want to do and for not a lot of money. I can remember visiting my mother-in-law for four years in a care home and thanking the staff for the work they were doing. She was one of those who paid, paid an awful lot of money every week to live in a care home for four years. So I'd have sooner had it home, but we couldn't cope, but hey, home. So looking to the future, there's something about skills tracing, skilled training. And also something I earlier said, Chairman, appreciating people who do jobs that none of us want to do, rather than relying on people coming from abroad at cheap wages, stopping innovation. So we are where we are. Let's look to the future. There will be a commission that looks at the past, but there could have been an alternative. And I can remember the Prime Minister saying that sadly, some of us are going to lose our loved ones before their time. And there's still people who won't get vaccinated. Come on.
councillor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. A lot has been said during the course of this debate. We as councillors are sometimes tempted to give in to hyperbole, bombast, and exaggeration. And we are all guilty of that from time to time. But sometimes the succumbing to that temptation means that points that could be valid get obscured by those ones that clearly aren't the case. The point that councillor Pardaisi made about staff being undervalued is just wrong. We all value the staff, and we as an authority have made sure that they know that they are valued because we've told them they are valued. But the point that councillor Pardaisi makes about pay is a fair one, but it becomes obscured by hyperbole and bombast from the other points that she's made. This is the greatest peacetime tragedy we've ever experienced. And as we sit here today in late 2021, with the benefit of hindsight, there are things we would have done differently. But this morning, some of you may have heard on the radio that scientists have discovered that lateral flow tests are more accurate than we first thought. That's only just been discovered today. Other things that are being discovered, for example, transmission from metal surfaces, we thought at the start of the pandemic, touching anything, even your post, could give you Covid. And we've moved on because we've learnt things. It is important that we learn from this so we don't repeat the mistakes in the future. But when another national tragedy emerges, we will make mistakes at the start. But what we've got to do is learn quickly, perhaps learn more quickly next time round. The way we look after people in our care homes is a really, really important subject for which we haven't really dedicated a great deal of time during this debate. Providing elderly people with dignity, with something to live for, and a great place to stay towards the end of their days is what we want to achieve here at Staffordshire County Council. And I am convinced that we can achieve this. There is some great literature about how we provide dignity for the elderly, how we provide a sense of purpose, and we should absorb that literature and make sure we deliver on the best of it here in Staffordshire. Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Treasury Management Report for the year ending 31st of March 2021. Olympics and Paralympics. councillor Jeremy Oates.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank my colleagues on the left for celebrating the opportunity for me to speak. Now, I'd just like to share my congratulations with those in the paper for the achievements of the Olympians and Paralympians from Staffordshire. But I'd like to extend that, if I may, Mr Chairman. As a parent of two elite athletes, they didn't quite make it to the Olympics, I've had the pleasure and pride of standing at international events and listening to the national anthem played and seeing my children march out into the arena. And it's a fantastic feeling. But what goes with that and many, many hours of driving your children around the country. Having, yeah, taxi driver. Having very difficult conversations when they're in their dark times, wishing them well as they step onto an aircraft to fly to Canada or Florida, wishing them well as they step through the waiting room doors to go for an MRI or a scan when they've had an injury. There's a heck of a lot that parents of elite athletes have to go through in supporting what are children. They start their careers as children, not fully fledged adults who have had education and time to be worldly. This is their world. They lose out on, and the athletes lose out on education, they lose out on sleepovers, they lose out on the other stuff. So really, what I wanted to do, Mr Chairman, was just not only congratulate and thank Adam Peaty, Fraser Clark, and Lee Pearson, but also their families and their support networks that got them to that state where they were able to compete and represent Great Britain. And also, we should pay a quick tribute to the National Lottery and the funding that has helped with these sports people. Olympic sports has been funded by the National Lottery since John Major's time, and we're now seeing the benefits of that. There are many sports which aren't Olympic sports and don't get the National Lottery funding. It happens that one of my children is in one of those sports, and I've got to find £3,000 to send to Florida in April. Donation's kindly received again. But no, there are some huge challenges and the whole network that has got these guys and girls to the Olympics and Paralympics should be celebrated. And I think we should say thank you to the support networks behind them.
councillor Bernard Peters.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm just harping back to the feel-good factor across Staffordshire that Mr De Velso eloquently described this morning. And I think we can enhance that comment by giving our congratulations to all of our Staffordshire Olympians. But I'd like to make a special reference to Fraser Clark, super heavyweight boxer, medal-winning boxer. Fraser Clark lives in my division in Horninglow. He was born in Horninglow. I'm not too sure whether he lives there now, but he was born in my division. Fraser Clark is a role model for the people of Burton and for the people in my division. And I'm sure we would all want to wish him well with his career post the Olympics.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
councillor Charlotte Atkins, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I want to extend my congratulations to equestrian champion, Sir Lee Pearson, who of course is from the Maulands. He struck triple gold at his, would you believe it, sixth Paralympics on his home-bred horse, Breezer. So that takes his total to a magnificent 14, which is pretty amazing. It's absolutely a magnificent achievement. But Lee isn't just a great equestrian, he's a tremendous role model. Years ago, he helped me campaign to get local charity, local disability charity, Rajad Sailability, its new boat store. I had to persuade him to go out on the water in a canoe. I don't think he was too impressed really, but actually, once he got out there, he absolutely loved it. But now, that was years ago, but now he's working with Caldwell Children to inspire children with disabilities and others to achieve their goals as he has done brilliantly himself. He almost didn't make it at birth, so it's amazing that he's achieved so much and that he is promoting the ambitions of children with disabilities who think that their horizons are limited. He shows that they're not limited. Thank you.
councillor Philip Hudson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. I've got to mention our famous son from Utoxeter, Adam Peaty. What a wonderful role model Adam has been to our young people of Utoxeter. And what a wonderful role model he's been to the people throughout our country and in doubt throughout the world. His dedication to everything that he does and the hard work that he puts in. I mean, if you watched him on Strictly Come Dancing, he came last, but he'd worked really hard. And it's thanks to his publicity that he didn't go into the dance-off. So not only do I congratulate him on his Olympic performance and the role model that he does, but I wish him well in Strictly Come Dancing because he certainly has put Utoxeter on the map.
councillor Mike Worvington.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think I'd also like to pass on my congratulations to Sir Lee Pearson, his whole family live in my division. And I think I'd just like to add my thanks to his father, David, and his mum for the support they've given over the years. And also give some credit to the horse that he reared from its birth and give them all the full support and very, very best wishes from Staffordshire County Council. Thank you.
What a fantastic feel-good factor the Olympics provided us with. Absolutely brilliant to see so many people at the top of their game, and in particular Staffordshire medal winners. But I think councillor Oates's point's really good as well, which is that across this county, there's lots of young people who are striving to replace those existing medal winners. And the effort they're having to go to using our facilities and district and borough council facilities to get there is something of note. Many of us around this chamber are funding things like grassroots sports through our local community fund initiatives. And those are the sort of contributions that help our next generation of medal winners. So let's celebrate this generation of medal winners, but also think about future generations and what we can do to replace them when their time is done.
Thank you. Afghan evacuees. councillor Simon Tag.
Thank you, Chairman. Really welcome this item being put on today. And I'd like to pass on thanks to the county council team that have been involved in helping these people who have escaped the clutches of the Taliban and also worked for our armed forces. And obviously, their families have also come with them over to the holiday in Newcastle. I'd like to also thank the Borough Council staff for the work that they've done, obviously on short notice. Not much notice was given of the arrival, so working with the county council and the police have made a safe and secure home for the moment for these people. And I think it's a tribute particularly Natasha Moody and her team here at the county council who've worked closely and based in the castle house in Newcastle with Borough Council teams and the police to ensure that everything has gone okay for those people. And what we want to know now really from the Home Office is obviously the dispersal and also the permanent homes for these individuals. As members will know, Staffordshire has said that it will take 25 families across the county. And I think it'd be really great if those people are already beginning to settle in Staffordshire that these were those people that were formed part of the 25 families. But at the moment, we're waiting for the Home Office to confirm that. But I think, once again, just thank you to the county council staff for the work that they've done. And I think it shows again, we've talked about earlier with town deals. We've also seen with Covid how councils work together. And a lot is said about enhanced two-tier working, but this in particular, how the Afghan evacuees have been integrated into North Staffordshire as a model of that. So thank you to everybody concerned.
councillor Anne Edler, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Afghan evacuees. I cannot let this item go by without mentioning the fantastic, and I mean fantastic, time-consuming work that has been undertaken by voluntary groups in Stafford. Hearts and Hands, Hidden Warriors, Imani Incredibly Eats, our own Walking Streets, and Support Siltmore. Dedication to this cause by these groups has been phenomenal. They collected so many goods, not just clothing. They ran out of space to store it all. One of the ladies took time out to take goods to Coventry and Manchester, even though she'd got four children of her own to take care of. The dedication to volunteering work by these groups knows no bounds. Well done, everyone. And I'm sure I speak for everyone in this chamber when I say one big thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Caroline Shorobridge, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I would firstly like to thank Newcastle Underline and specifically Simon Tag for the wonderful work that has been done with unaccompanied asylum-seeking children. And again, with the evacuees. I welcome the support and commitment the cabinet member and this council has already shown to vulnerable people in the excellent resettlement scheme. I also would like to thank the befrienders of which Stafford welcome refugees must get a mention. But may I pay particular thanks to a wonderful family which councillor Edler has already mentioned as they're in her division. It's Osama and Leana Al Khaldi and their three inspiring girls, Maya, Enya, and Imani. Imani is just 11 years old, yet this wonderful young lady started a charity a few years ago called Imani Eats. The point of the charity is to put fridges in all places that hold food banks, which is now very successful. Well, once the news hit Stafford about the Afghan evacuees, Imani stated, we have to do something. And of course, the whole family rallied together. They put out a plea for good quality clothes, donations of clothes through Amazon, and a JustGiving page, which they then had to join up to support Staffordshire. The clothes absolutely pouring in thanks to the wonderful people in Stafford. And another great Stafford-based charity, Hearts and Hands, run by Katie and Lorraine, with great volunteers like Fiona and Nina, her mother, offered their base a beacon group as a drop-off point between them. Between them, they made the most amazing results, donations just absolutely pouring in. These have all now been delivered to the refugees. So lastly, I would like to thank all charities and individuals who have been involved in welcoming vulnerable people into Stafford or Staffordshire. Thanks to all, you have the most wonderful, loving hearts, and I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to pay particular tribute to the portfolio holder councillor Victoria Wilson for her oversight on this, and in particular Natasha Moody, one of our council officers who has been absolutely first-class in this endeavour. Could I also pay tribute to Newcastle Underline Borough Council, the leader of which councillor Simon Tag is in the chamber at the moment, for their endeavours? They have handled the process of the arrival of the Afghan refugees with aplomb. I'm sometimes drawn to, in the newspapers, the things we worry about here in the United Kingdom. Much of the stuff in the papers is tittle-tattle, and much of it is really quite trivial. It's just worth bearing in mind where these folks have come from. They're not facing first-world problems, they're facing problems of survival, of life and death. And we have provided them home, comfort, and our officers and our colleagues and other councils have provided first-class service to give them the warmest welcome possible. And for that, I thank them, Mr Chairman.
Holiday activities and food programme. councillor Tina Clements.
Thank you, Chair. I had the pleasure of meeting councillor Mark Sutton at Hambury Farm School, which is in my division of Watlington North, over the summer holidays on what was probably the hottest day of the year, running around after children on a sports field. I would like to say Mark was much better at it than I was. They offered a real exciting range of different activities. And what struck me the most was the range of food that they were offering. A lot of children have never had some of these foods. And unfortunately, we missed out on the juice bike. That would have been great because I'd love to have a go at that, even if it was spinach. I believe there was a problem with spinach at one of the other schools where it was very overloaded. The figures started at 122 and went up to 162 by the fourth week, which proves its success in itself. I'm now looking forward to what they're going to offer on the winter programme. Hopefully, it's not sledging or skiing because that involves broken bones and things. And I'd like to also thank Community Together CIC, which is Lee Bates and team, for the work that they did and the programme that they ran from the Castle Grounds, which was also a massive success. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Janice Sylvester-Hall.
Thank you very much. In addition to that, I also missed out on the juice bike, but that was intentional. For anybody who's not familiar, it's one where there's an exercise bike with a food processor blender fixed to the front. And as you start to pedal, then it blends into what should be a very healthy smoothie. I saw the spinach, I think that might have been the school that I also went to with councillor Sutton, which was Charmwood in Lichfield. In Lichfield, they offered and delivered over 3,000 possible places, and there was an excellent take-up. And the engagement of the young people that I saw there was superb. And I would add, in addition to the foods that were being available, were hot meals that were also being prepared on-site. So as well as the sporting activities, the healthy eating, there was also an opportunity for them to have a decent hot meal as well.
councillor Mark Sutton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The holiday activities and food programme that was delivered across the country, linking activities for children entitled to free school meals with food, has been absolutely excellent. In Staffordshire, there was a take-up of over 20,000 places across the four weeks. 52% of children and families offered a place, took it up. And albeit, you might think, wash, that's quite a lot who didn't. If you compare it to like authorities where the take-up has been reported at about 20%, I think that's been an absolutely excellent take-up. Over 600 children with special education needs and disabilities registered to attend what are the mainstream holiday activity and food programme. And we hope very much that the take-up during Christmas period will be equally as good and that going forward, this will be something that we will be able to do with the appropriate funding from government in future summer holidays in particular. And can I also take the opportunity to thank those members that came with me to visit different programmes across the county during the holidays. But in particular, again, great work done by the same team from the previous item, Natasha Moody, Jo Sullivan, and her team that have put all this together in a very, very short timeframe that took an awful lot of work.
councillor Mike Sutherland.
Like the prior two speakers ahead of councillor Mark Sutton, I actually endorse what they said, so I won't repeat it, but I certainly endorse it. And I want to thank councillor Mark Sutton on two accounts. First, for driving this activity in the first place. And secondly, to coming across to Rougeley and Etching Hill. Now, I'm a school governor at this school, so I was particularly interested. And I was able to observe, if you like, firsthand the activity provided by the provider, in this case Progressive Sports, and that was brilliant. They were brilliant in terms of the activities and the way they managed them, but equally brilliant with the children. So overall, it's been said, the organisation was excellent. And do you know what? The children really embraced the whole event that they were in, particularly when I was there, and the feedback was brilliant. Now, Mrs Marie Smith, now she's the head. And if I'm honest, she didn't really push it at a governor's meeting prior to the event. But I have to say, at my last governor's meeting, I couldn't stop her. She was highly complimentary about the activities and about the overall delivery. And I have to say, she said, whatever you do, to me, whatever you do, make sure you pass on my thanks and the school's thanks to councillor Mark Sutton. She actually met him on the visit, which was good as well. So that's all I want to add to what was an excellent event. And for me, it is about outcomes. Just in Etching Hill School, 352 days of children's support, so it was excellent. So thank you, Mark, again. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, just one final thing in the leader's statement, and I'll call councillor Angela.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Mental health. You've heard me say many times in this chamber, mental health is everyone's, everybody's business. More so now that the mental health survey has been launched, and it will finish on the 12th of November. Please, councillors, can you make sure you inform the community groups, parish councils, volunteer groups that you are involved with about the survey? Not forgetting also your own personal experiences. Every councillor and officers of Staffordshire County Council have suffered mental health issues, no matter how small, should be filling in the survey. The officers putting the strategy together need as much information as possible to make sure Staffordshire County Council... Sorry, bear with me. ...have a strategy that is fit for purpose come April 2022. And it enables the council to give the best guidance possible to our residents, no matter what age. A link to the survey will be provided to you all in an email. If there is anyone from the press listening, can they also play their part by advertising the link to the survey? It can be found on the council website. Thank you, Chairman.
Change to the Constitution, number of questions by members at full council. Councilor Worthington, will you move with consideration of the report, please?
Move with consideration of the report, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Trowbridge, will you second?
Thank you, Chair.
Councilor Charlotte Atkins.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I want to put the record straight. I think that councillor Worthington was misinformed, because he said at the Audit and Standards Committee on the 30th of September that I was, quote, "more than happy for this proposal to go ahead", limiting councillors to one question rather than two. Let me make it absolutely clear, I am very unhappy about this proposal. The leader of the council told me that I had no choice, because the Conservatives could take all 15 questions up to the limit that come to this committee, denying the opportunity for any opposition members to ask any questions at all, if I objected. The rationale behind this proposal is that each member would have a better chance of being able to successfully put forward a question at each meeting. But over the last five years, yes, five years, we've only reached the maximum number of 15 on one occasion. That was in the meeting of March 2017. That was the last meeting before the elections in May 2017. So understandably, a number of members wanted to ask questions about things in their division prior to the election. So why is this change needed now? Today, we haven't reached the limit of 15. Opposition councillors are not hogging all the questions. We're not crowding out other members asking questions. So the premise for this change is totally disingenuous. So why is this change really being made now? Is it because opposition members are too effective at asking questions? Is it because cabinet members don't want to be held to account? Or is it just pure vindictiveness? It has been suggested that members have other means of obtaining information. That is more likely the case for members of the ruling group. I've used questions in the past when all else has failed, and I cannot get answers from officers. With a question, there's a written answer on the record, with the chance to ask a supplementary. That's not the case with asking questions on the leader's statement. Because of our reduced numbers, the opposition can no longer call in decisions. So cabinet members are effectively off the hook. When we come to discuss the scrutiny report at our next item, please don't pretend that this administration welcomes scrutiny, evidence-based policy-making and an effective opposition, because this decision proves the opposite. There is no evidence that this change is necessary, because no one is being denied the opportunity to ask a question, and that has been the case for the last five years at least. It is undemocratic and attempts to close down opposition voices. To be honest, I expected more from this council leader. Thank you, Chair.
Councilor Alan White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, the electorate spoke, didn't they, in May? Ninety-two per cent of this chamber is Conservative, 6% is Labour, and 2%, you are a whole 2%, Jill, is independent. Fifty-three per cent of the questions being tabled this afternoon are from the Labour Group. It seems to me that it is disproportionate that members who represent a very small percentage of the county get to have a disproportionate go at the agenda when it comes to formal questions. Therefore, whilst this appears to reduce, in fact, it doesn't appear to reduce, it does reduce their ability to ask questions, they still have a disproportionate number of questions available to them, because if they ask their four questions, then the balance of the council, all 57 of us, have only got a possible 11 to go at. So I think whilst it might feel unfair, it actually puts us in a better position in terms of, you know, one member, one vote perhaps, and I thought that's what the Labour Party was up for. I think what we demonstrated during the course of today's council meeting is that cabinet members are held to account, and sometimes they're more robustly held to account by members of the Conservative group than they are members of the Labour Group. We are not afraid of being held to account at all. And let's be clear about scrutiny. Scrutiny is about improving policy, making it better for the public for whom we serve. It is not about a mechanism of blocking the agenda of the controlling group. And that's what, in some cases, particularly in the last council and the council before, it was used at. I remember as a portfolio holder having one of my decisions called in twice, twice on the same decision, for no reason other than to just obstruct. Scrutiny in this place is effective. You will see that in the reports that are being delivered by the chairman of the scrutiny committees in the next agenda item, Mr. Chairman. This, in terms of the number of questions available, evens things up. I would suggest that perhaps the trick here is to hone down the questions that are being asked to something that is concise and to the point and gets to the issue that you want to have solved, rather than grandstanding, which is so often the case, as we've seen with questions previously. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilor Worthington, do you wish to respond to the debate?
Yeah, I do, actually, yeah. I do concur with what councillor Alan White says, but also, it isn't restricting the questions, because it does say in the recommendation that all the questions will receive a written answer. So it isn't that the questions aren't going to be, you know, replied to. So I don't think there's any problem with the recommendation whatsoever. Thank you, Chairman.
It has been moved and seconded that the recommendation contained in this report be approved. Is that agreed? Against? Thank you. Scrutiny Annual Report 2020/21. Councilor Greta Trix, will you move with consideration of the report, please?
Yes, Chairman, I so move. I'd like to speak about the document. You'll see the word unprecedented is used in the first page, and I try to avoid that on all reviews of what happened in the last year. But it is fair to say that it has been strange as a year, and probably the word I would substitute is challenging. It's been challenging for a number of reasons. During the year, the whole aspect of scrutiny changed in that we had four select committees who had to funnel into one. We had to look at work programmes that had previously been designed for the four select committees to then do everything through corporate. We also had the challenge of prioritising what mattered most, so that we didn't consider all of the work programmes, but we put a focus on the things that mattered most in the eye of the storm while we had the pandemic. And we certainly had a challenge of working online. That was one of the things that we all had to learn, and I know that I can speak for members and officers, that we hoped everybody knew what everybody else was doing at the end of the line. And I certainly benefited from seeing many box rooms that have been improved and kitchen corners, and I know which councillors acquired new paintings and plant pots to put into the background. It was certainly an interesting year in terms of member officer relationships. One of the things that we strongly need when we're doing things like scrutiny is to have a good relationship. This was made more difficult because the very members and officers that needed to work together during this challenging year couldn't do so on a face-to-face basis. So we were having Teams meetings and Zoom meetings with various people in preparation for meetings, so even the prep meetings were difficult. But I thank officers involved with that. We did achieve during that year, and I'd like to just summarise what we did achieve. I think we, and this is something the leaders just referred to, I think we presented a challenge to the cabinet, and we did create that robust challenge and ask the questions that we were prepared to ask on a non-partical basis. I think we presented our endeavours to work in the new environment, and I think during that year, it was quite clear that nobody had all the right answers. Nobody knew what was going on in the world, and we certainly had to ask ourselves what was the best approach on things like adult social care, when a lot of the people that we're dealing with were having to self-isolate. You know, the very people we were supposed to be looking after as a county authority were self-isolating and not getting out of the house. I think the other thing we certainly proved is that we could function on an online footing, and we showed that we could benefit from the opportunities that online presented. I've always been a big enthusiast for getting input from outside, and I told you before, I like stats, so I'm just going to draw one statistic out of the report, which is that we had 30 meetings and 62 external experts to those meetings. So I think that proved the point that we did our bit to get as many partners organised and contributing to our meetings. So given the particular challenges of things like care home controls, the whole aspect of school bubbling, which we were responsible for, and as I mentioned earlier, the aged that we've been looking after, having to self-isolate, they were all challenges for the various groups. So I think the strength of operating with partners was proven. We've certainly learnt from this that the voluntary sector was important, working with district councils, borough councils and parishes was important. And I'm not forgetting the fact that we also had the MTFS group, which involved all of the select committee chairman on it at the time, and they looked at the review of COVID grants, COVID provisions, and the continued focus on our demands, particularly on adult social care and children's services. So in conclusion, in proposing the report, I'd like to thank the chairman and vice-chairman and officers who are involved with those four committees, many of whom are in the room.
I will now call the chairs of scrutiny in order. Councilor Tina Clements.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, I'm going to speak very briefly on Prosperous Staffordshire Select Committee, and just to thank the outgoing chair, Ian Parry, that's just left the room. Obviously, the topics that we discussed are in the report, so I'm not going to go over there. Moving forward, we had one of the first resident scrutiny proposals on 20 is plenty, and we've got another one coming forward on the flooding strategy at the November meeting. And I just want to say thank you to everybody that commits to those meetings. They are working really well, and we've got a Transport Inquiry Day at the end of January next year, so I'm really pleased that that's one of councillor Parry's ideas, and we're now carrying that forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Jill Burnett.
In councillor Bob Spencer's absence, just being asked to say a few words and to thank everybody involved in the scrutiny annual report, and to say, as vice-chair of the new safeguarding overgoings scrutiny committee, that we've already got a comprehensive work programme for the committee for 21/22. Thank you.
Councilor Jeremy Peart.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. I'd like to start off by thanking the officers and the committee members for their diligence and hard work through what was a challenging 12 months. It is the largest committee, it is the hardest-working committee, and...
(audience cheering)
And it is undertaken in partnership with our district and borough colleagues, and that is a key element in terms of trying to make sure that the health agenda becomes uniform through all of our public sector partners. I'd also like to thank the senior-level partners from the NHS and care who attended those meetings, because without their input, frankly, the scrutiny would not have been effective. And I certainly refute councillor Atkins' previous comments in terms of the effectiveness of scrutiny. And before I move on, I would like just to recognise the endeavours of the previous chair and cabinet support member, Dr. Johnny McMahon, because he was chair during part of that municipal year. The principal focus during the 12 months, no surprise, was on COVID, the response to COVID and the recovery from COVID. And the committee gave specific focused attention on the progression of the pandemic, whether that be in care home support plans, whether it be in support for the elderly, the impact on flu vaccination programmes, the impact on health and care services, the vaccination programme, and so it goes on and on and on, but I won't. We also have undertaken a number of lessons learned, whether it be in terms of COVID, whether it be in terms of GP access, or the backlog in health and hospital appointments and surgery. We had a number of positive outcomes, including holding the system, that's the NHS and social care, to account. We also persuaded North Staff CCG to extend hearing aids to those with moderate hearing loss, which was a campaign which had been run for the last three or four years, subsequent to the decision of the CCG. We secured the reopening of the majority of services that were closed during lockdown. We also supported the vaccination programmes rollout, and there the system's objective to not leave anyone behind. However, looking forward, there are a huge number of challenges that the Health and Care Overview and Scrutiny Committee has, including system change. There is a backlog of consultations and plans from within the NHS to bring forward business cases to change how services are delivered. Secondly, there is the introduction of the integrated care system, which will be a statutory instrument from April of next year. There is the continued requirement to partner, develop with partners, and to maintain and expand that work, because no one organisation is in Ireland. There is the issue of mental health and the impact from the numerous lockdowns and from long COVID. We've talked today about the care home market and the changes and sustainability thereof. We've not talked about social care in detail today, but that is another element which is going to require some significant scrutiny, as is the role of individual wellbeing to delay the entry into both the NHS and the social care system. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Mark Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought I'd just take this opportunity to echo a little bit of what was just said by the previous speaker, in absolutely refuting the suggestion that this administration, myself... by the previous speaker in absolutely refuting the suggestion that this administration, myself and my colleagues across here, do not welcome good constructive scrutiny. We do. It's a fundamental part of how we develop, improve the policies that go forward. And I think I speak for us all and we say as one, we absolutely do welcome good quality scrutiny.
councillor Philip White.
Thank you very much, Chair. And councillor Sutton has just said part of what I was going to say, but I thought it was appropriate just to offer a great big thank you to everyone who serves on our scrutiny committees. There was some mention of complacency earlier on, which I wasn't sure whether it was speaking to national politics or our local politics here, but I think it is important when you do have such a dominant political group as we have in Staffordshire, in this county council and indeed in the previous one, that we are careful not to fall into complacency or be thinking that we do have really strong scrutiny. And one of the measures that we've taken in this new council is to strengthen scrutiny so that it has a distinct scrutiny element and overview element. So we're looking both backwards and forwards in each of our work areas. And I have to say, as a cabinet member, I both dread and look forward to my attendance at the Prosperous Staffordshire Select Committees, which is the committee that scrutinises the work that I'm responsible for. I dread it because I know I'm going to be asked hard questions and I look forward to it because I know the answers to those questions are going to really help me in my portfolio and doing the best job that I can for Staffordshire. They're not political, in my experience. I'm sure occasionally something strays out, but they tend to be really good quality sessions that are focused on what's best for people in Staffordshire and making sure our services are absolutely up to scratch. So a huge thank you to everyone in the chamber who participates in that so energetically and keep on asking those difficult questions.
Thank you. It is a cabinet member who doesn't realise what is coming, who presents himself to an MTFS working group without quite a flow of adrenaline going through your veins. Because you really just don't know what the questions that you are going to get asked. And councillor Greathorex does a good job of keeping me awake the night before, not by his presence, but by his anticipated presence the following morning at the MTFS working group. So I'm hugely grateful to the work of scrutiny. As some people in this chamber know, many years ago, I was chairman of Corporate Review and revelled in the opportunity to scrutinise then Philip Atkins and his team and embraced the opportunity at every turn. So thank you to the scrutiny committees and I look forward to further scrutiny in due course.
councillor Greathorex, do you wish to respond to the debate? Thank you. I move that reports be received. Is that agreed? Thank you. Report of the chair of the Staffordshire Police Fire and Crime Panel. councillor Peters, will you move consideration of the report, please?
Sorry, I move consideration of the report, please.
councillor Gillian Paddeasy.
Two very quick points, Chair. We're told that officer recruitment is going very well. That's good to hear. It was a shame, however, that we got rid of so many in the first place. And it's not just bodies that we dismissed. It was countless years of invaluable and irreplaceable experience, which will not be made up overnight by new recruitment. Secondly, Chair, considering the major concerns and issues we have right now around violence against women and the safety of women, which sadly has set back even further, particularly amongst women, the issue of trust and confidence in our policing service, I'm surprised that that issue has not been addressed at all in this report. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Simon Tag.
Thank you, Chairman. Just like to make a comment on the page 58, the top of the chart there relating to issues relating to antisocial behaviour and intimidation in Newcastle town centre. I watched the meeting back and the picture that was painted, particularly by councillor that doesn't actually live in Newcastle and I don't believe visits Newcastle, about it being a den of iniquity, et cetera, is wrong. There's a lot of work being done to improve our town centre. councillor Sweeney talked earlier about the amazing amounts of money going into the town. But of course, we could always do with more policing. I think that was the point that was made by councillor Jill Heeson, who's the portfolio holder in Newcastle Borough for community safety issues. And I'd just like to say to the chair and just to confirm that a meeting has been set up between councillor Heeson, our police and crime commissioner, his team and myself to look at better ways of policing in the town centre. Thank you.
councillor Stephen Sweeney.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. No, it's an observation, it's not a question. I just had the pleasure to be invited to Becky Bryant's leaving do a couple of weeks ago at Fire HQ. And I think Becky Bryant was an exceptional chief officer and I had several years working with her and she's an excellent officer. But really to say that her replacement, Rob Barber, are also an excellent officer. And I think he'll do Staffordshire very well and I wish him every luck in the future. Thank you, Chair.
councillor Angela.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Well, in answer to councillor Parry's question about women and safety, and I actually raised that with the new police, with the crime commissioner and also the new chief constable at the meeting on Tuesday, and also about women on the streets and their safety, and also asked if he would be vetting the police force as they've been mentioned in the media and it's happening in some places. So I hope that clarifies your question, councillor Parry.
councillor Bernard Peters.
Thank you, Chair. The question around the disreputable police officer Wade Cousins, we couldn't have possibly known what was going on at the time of the meeting in response to the point you made. That was on the 30th of September when we had that meeting. So we weren't in a position to discuss that because we had no facts and I'm not even clear whether it was still a matter before the calls at the time, so we couldn't possibly have commented on that. There is an intention by the commissioner to initiate a recruitment policy of additional police officers. He is focused on that and he recognises there is a need to do that. So we'll be keeping our eye on that. Special constables are figuring in his plans. So we were assured that the way forward would be detailed in his police plan, police and crime plan that will come to us around the 25th of October. We will, listening to councillor Tag, we will set up a meeting to discuss the Newcastle issues. A colleague on the panel had made that point at a previous meeting and she's very focused on it and we've taken it on board. So councillor Tag makes a good point. I think I'll ask my PA team member to support us and fix a meeting up with the commissioner and councillor Tag to see if we can identify a way forward on that matter. In terms of my report, thank you for those questions. And I want to assure you that we have a very, very proactive panel now. It's deep seated across many issues, laypeople, elected members and people who do have a big interest in the safety of the community. With your agreement, Chair, I'd just like to move on to a meeting that we had this week to approve or ratify the appointment of the commissioner's preferred candidates to the position of chief fire officer. Chief fire officer, Mr Rob Barker, was unanimously approved by the panel. He came across as a very strong person, a very mindful person and a very caring person. So we're very, very hopeful that he'll be making a massive contribution to the people of Staffordshire. Regarding the chief constable, Mr Chris Noble, what an incredible guy he was. His background, he served 20 years in Northern Ireland. He was across everything that we threw at him. And I don't know whether, I can see one or two people here today who were with us at the meeting and we gave him a real grilling in terms of the way forward and we were very assured. And I was grateful to Mr Hudson for his questions with his background as a retired police officer. So we were unanimous again in appointing Mr Chris Noble as the chief constable of Staffordshire. We congratulated them and wished them well. And the commissioner knows that my panel is there to support him and to hold him to account. Thank you, Chair.
I move that this report be received. Is that agreed? Questions on the standing order, number eight. Members, the nine questions and answers have been circulated to members and published on our website. In accordance with a procedure, the question answers will be taken as read. Allow each question five minutes in which to ask a supplementary question and to receive an answer. No debate is allowed on these questions. councillor Pritchard to councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you councillor Williams. Tamworth Borough Council is meeting with the Office of Zero Emission Vehicles from the Department of Transport. This meeting is at their request after they've identified Tamworth as an area they wish to improve the public EV charging offer. Can I invite the cabinet member to attend this meeting along with relevant highways officers so we can hope to see a boost for Tamworth electric vehicle owners?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the supplementary. Be happy to attend if I am available, if you go through my PA and to see that we'll be able to go through.
councillor, Mrs Charlotte Atkins to councillor Philip White.
Chairman, yeah, my supplementary is, what assessment have you made of the number of people who are likely to fall into poverty as a result of this cut in universal credit? I am really quite concerned about people's ability to budget, having relied on this uplift over the last year or more. It's very difficult in a period of rising prices, particularly for energy and food, to budget when you're on a very, very low income. £20 a week may not appear to be a huge amount for people on, you know, a big salary and certainly not, you know, the sort of salary of a cabinet member in government. But my concern is that £20 can make a real difference between being able to feed people adequately and not. So I know that you've got a plan to develop partnerships with the boroughs and districts, but I wondered what progress had been made in that respect.
Thank you very much for the supplementary question. So as you've rightly said, this is a matter of concern for everyone. We're all here to look after our vulnerable. But the answer to your question is in the original question, which is that we're working with our partners. It's not a developing partnership, it's a very well-established partner. In this instance, that's principally with our districts and boroughs, who have the lead responsibility for revenue and benefits, to assess that need so that we can address it. And when we have that detail figure, if it ever arrives, because it is typically a dynamic situation in people's lives as to whether or not they fall into that, in that need, and therefore the response is less about statistics and more about having the ability to be dynamic and respond to people when they require it. But when we have further information, I'll be delighted to share it with all members.
councillor Charlotte Atkins to councillor Mrs Jessel. councillor McMahon will answer.
What I would like to know is what social care vacancies we have within Staffordshire, both in terms of domiciliary care and in the care homes? I appreciate in the care homes, we've got a relatively high vaccination rate among care staff, but I think perhaps with domiciliary staff, that might be slightly lower. But also the other pressures on care staff have left many of them perhaps taking up their stressful jobs, like going into working in supermarkets or the hospitality sector. So have you got an assessment of where we are in terms of vacancies? And what is the county council doing to try and ensure that these staff vacancies do not lead to a falling quality of care, both in the home and in the care homes? Thank you.
We're assured in terms of the care home market that the vaccination rate is such that, and particularly with the vacancy rate in tandem with it, is such that it shouldn't have a material effect on the service currently. But you're quite right to mention that the staff issue across both the care home and the home care market is a challenge. And we were doing all that we can to address that challenge. We have a particular team at the county council to help support that. It's the care development team, which involves recruitment, retention and to help the training of staff in the market. I don't have a figure to hand about the home care and the vaccination position for home care. You're right, it is a bit less than the care home market. And I will get that and give it to you.
The next two questions are from councillor Usain to councillor Wilson and councillor to councillor Price. But as councillor Usain is not here, there'll be no supplementaries. councillor Paddeasy to councillor David Williams.
Thank you, Chair. If I could ask, please, if privatisation of our bus services worked, then why has the government allowed Transport for London to control and regulate the network in the capital, but has allowed public transport in other regions to fall into ruins? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for a very strange question that I think you would want to ask the Prime Minister rather than myself. However, the fact that buses are on a decline in rural areas is a national problem, mainly due to the fact that most people either travel via their own vehicles or, and buses have become something that is superfluous to many. But we are working with all of the bus companies in Staffordshire with going along with the BIC to try and ensure that whatever offer that we can do for Staffordshire is the right product. And we have a very ambitious forward-thinking plan going forward to improve customer experience and hopefully improve the numbers of people using buses. But as I say, asking me to answer for what the government has done, and we're talking about 35 years ago, probably not the right place.
councillor Paddeasy to councillor Philip White.
Thank you, Chair. There is no supplementary.
Did you say there is no supplementary? Thank you. councillor Avstar to councillor Tag.
Thank you, Chairman. There's no supplementary.
councillor Avstar to councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, there's no supplementary.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go on then to petitions. Does any member have a petition they wish to present? councillor Mrs Atkins.
I'm presenting this petition on behalf of over 1,000 residents of Leake who do not feel safe in the centre of the town. And they're calling for a 20 mile an hour speed limit throughout the town centre and also safe crossings. There's an urgent need for better pedestrian safety measures in Leake. Crossings have been promised but have not yet been delivered. There are detailed existing plans to improve St Edward Street, which runs on the edge of the town centre with a 20 mile an hour speed limit and controlled and uncontrolled crossings. But there's no start date and understandably, residents are getting pretty impatient about facilities in the town to improve their own safety. So I'm hoping that this petition will help push along those plans for the future. The frustration is felt throughout the town that little is being done to improve traffic flow and also safety for residents. Thank you.
councillor Mike Worthington. councillor Mike Worthington.
Thank you Chairman. I'm presenting a petition on behalf of councillor Heath who's had to go to a hospital appointment. It's a small amount of signatures than councillor Atkins. It's a hundred and fifty signatures that presented Horton Parish Council in September. It's referenced following a number of serious collisions on the crossroads at Crowborough Road, Lask Edge Road and Blackwood House Lane. The residents feel compelled to make this junction safer for road users by asking the members of Horton Parish Council to support the request and demand the council mark the junction with adequate road markings and notify drivers to stop and not to give a way sign on the crossroad. They have discussed the incident with the police and they've been assured they will notify the highways agency that the crossroads are becoming notorious sight for serious accidents. Thank you Mr Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Janice Sylvester Hall.
Thank you Chairman. Colleagues, it is with great personal sadness, I'm presenting this petition to Staffordshire County Council on behalf of the very concerned residents of Lichfield City North and further afield. The petition itself amassed over five thousand signatures and certainly well over two and a half thousand of those were valid. The petition is titled Improve the Road Layout on the A5192 in Lichfield on Eastern Avenue and Grange Lane Junction. There's been over a number of years, many reports that have been prepared and a final version of that was published in July this year, stated that the problem lies in the eight different manoeuvres passed through a shared area, goes into detail of what those are and naturally of course, many of those conflict and can't occur at the same time with no movement having clear priority and it's largely up to drivers to resolve these conflicts safely. It also goes on to state that not only is the accident rate four and a half times higher than the average for this type of road, that the figure could actually and arguably be higher. It's a complicated junction, complicated due to the amount of possible manoeuvres and then it's no surprise that there is an above average number of accidents. The reason that the petition has been brought about at this time comes about from the fact that on the sixteenth of July this year, Luke Cotton, who is a twenty-two-year-old resident of Lichfield, lost his life at this junction after his motorcycle collided with a car. There is an inquest that is duly waited, but my heartfelt condolences go to his family who I met with recently. Colleagues, I'm aware that there's a finite amount of resources, but I would ask that improvements to this junction are made. I wholeheartedly support the petition and I would ask for your support in making sure that this happens sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Item eleven is excluding public, but as we have no business that the public require excluding, I will call proceedings to an end. Can I thank you for attending today for the quality debate and we'll meet again. Thank you very much.